Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. And now I'll take roll call. And we'll have to do that manually to start. So same thing as last night. We'll start, I asked you to maybe say here. Counselor Everett McPherson?
Present.
Counselor Doug Gates?
Here.
Counselor Robbie Hiltz?
Here.
Counselor Riley Peckford?
Here.
Counselor, oh my god. Tim Harding? Oh, he left, Counselor Bobby Best? Emily Lutz? And Christina Sappington? I'm trying to get that Sappington right.
Thank you.
Is it close?
I know, it's very long.
And Counselor Peter Allen?
Present.
And I'm Dave Corkum, Mayor. And I guess we'll start, we'll go around the room to introduce ourselves, I believe. And I guess maybe we're looking for just a little quick comment about, okay. So my name is Dave Corkum. I was former mayor of Kentville for 25 years. I was the mayor, 11 of those, sorry. And former president of UNSM. I've been out in municipal politics for approximately 10 years. And I'm far from the sharpest tack in the box when it comes to technology. So I need all the help I can get. And we'll go down the line. We'll start with Counselor McPherson and go around the band.
Thank you very much, Mayor Corkum. Good morning, everyone. I'm very excited, pleased to be here amongst this honorable group of people. I've spent my career, the past 39 years, in education with the public school system. And more recently, the last five years at Acadia University. Been very active in community. Spent 18 years on Canyon Village Commission and a number of other different volunteer experiences throughout the community. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you. Counselor Gates?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Counselor Doug Gates for District Two. Lifelong resident of Port Williams, apple farmer. Been involved in the village commission of Port Williams for 20 years. Involved in the Lions Club, fairly active. I took a step back from the municipal and the council of Port Williams for a few years to deal with my wife's illness. And everything is good. Looking forward to working here in the County of Kings with my fellow counselors. Thank you.
Counselor Hiltz?
Good morning, folks. My name's Robbie Hiltz from District Three. I've lived in, grew up, born and grew up in Berwick. Reside in Somerset. Married 15 years. Have a 15-year-old daughter, 12-year-old son. I'm a program coordinator at Kings Rehab Center. So have about 150 residents there, nine staff under me. So we get to do activities, vocational opportunities, community access, that kind of thing. Operate a small business, Old Hickory Buildings of Berwick. Very excited to be here. Paid a lot of attention to municipal politics over the last probably eight years. Decided this year to run. And yeah, I want to make some changes here in Kings County. And excited to see the faces here. Looks like a great group. I've met a lot of staff in the building. And yeah, very eager to get started. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Peckford?
Good morning. I'm Riley Peckford, District Four, from Kingston. Born and raised, besides a few years in Ottawa to try and learn a little bit of higher education. I, for the last six years, have been working in construction and development and spent my fair share of time on the other side of this room. And I'm quite looking forward to being on this side and seeing what kind of impactful change we can make over the next four years.
Thank you, Riley. And Counselor Harding?
Good morning. Glad to be back. District Five. I live in Lake George. Work for the town of Berwick. I'm on the countdown now. I've got five months left for retirement. So in some ways, that's great. Some ways, a little scary. But I hope to get back into the municipal, what, you know, the job of seeing all my communities and being around the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Best?
Test, test, perfect. Bob Best in District Six. My career was 35 years at Canada Post. I retired eight years ago. And I started my 40th year at the Appledome Arena in Berwick on May the first. And I'm working on another five-year contract to take me to 70. We have a beef farm. We started it with two animals back 35 years ago. And we get all the cattle home today. We'll have 100 head of cows there for next year. I'm looking forward to working with everybody here. I think we've got an incredibly exciting group. And it's great to be on council again. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our new birthday boy. Counselor Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Emily Lutz. I live in Rockland. My family's apple farm. I don't have much to do with the apple farming business. My parents, my husband and my brother are all doing that. I've got three kids. I work also with the Nova Scotia Fruit Growers Association. So that's my sort of day job. Where I have an office at the Kentville Research Station. And it's my third term on council. Agree with Counselor Best. We've got a great group around the table. Super excited to work with everybody. And I'm really excited to see what we can accomplish.
Thank you. Counselor Sappington?
Hi, I'm Christina Sappington. I have a degree in English and Mass Communications. I was a radio DJ for almost two decades in the US and Canada. And then owned my own voiceover studio. Right now, I am vice chair of the Kings County Family Resource Center. I sit on their policy advisory committee. I'm on the school advisory committee of New Minus Elementary School and the PTA of EMS. I have a 13-year-old and twin seven-year-olds. And I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you. And Counselor Allen?
Thank you. I'm Peter Allen. I live in Grand Prairie. I taught school 34 years before retiring from that. The last 18 years, I've worked at various jobs in the vineyard and different farms in the area. This is my third term, starting the third term as counselor, and looking forward to working with the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the best part of my job, I get to turn it over to the CAO.
Morning. I could echo a lot of the comments. I really look forward to working with council. And personally, I consider the office that I hold here with the municipality a distinct pleasure. It's a bit of a privilege to serve as the municipality's chief administrative officer. So I was trying to think earlier this morning. I think Mayor Corkum is either my ninth or 10th mayor or warden. In between those times, I've worked for myself for about 13 years. In my own company. And I also was a shareholder in another company. What else can I say? My background is accounting. And yeah, I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you. So I think now we go over to the side and do some introductions. That's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Good morning. And through you, Mr. Mayor to council. My name's Rob Frost. I'm the deputy chief administrative officer here in the municipality of County of Kings. I've been in this role for about a little over six years now. I've been in municipal government and administrative roles for about a dozen years. I was the last CAO of Hansport, the first CAO of Barrington, and I spent a bit of time at municipal affairs. And prior to that, I had worked in economic development and also had some entrepreneurship in my own businesses. And again, look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Barr. I'm the director of finance in IT. Going on almost six years here with the municipality in the new year. Prior to that, I was the CAO for the Town of Annapolis Rural for four years. So almost 10 years in municipal government. Prior to that, I worked in construction safety side of things. I'm obviously in an accounting background and was the director of finance for Safety Association in Burnside. Married, got two kids, and looking forward to the new council. Welcome, everybody. Congrats on your elections.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Trish Javarek. I'm the director of planning and inspections here. And I'm very excited to work with all of you in the coming years. I've been here 34 years. Throughout that time, numerous positions. I've been in management here since 2010. Yeah, so very excited to move forward.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name's Brad Carrigan. I'm the director of engineering in Public Works. I'm going to go the opposite direction and say how I started. I'm a chemical engineer, chemical and process engineer, graduated from TONS in 1996. After that, I spent over 25 years in the private sector, working for valve and instrumentation companies primarily. Left about eight years ago and spent seven years working as director of Public Works for the municipality of West Hans and doing capital projects before coming here a year ago. Married with two boys, heavily into sports. Got an older son that just finished his last year with the Wildcats and has moved to high school hockey, who's also a heavy canoe sprint paddler, is actually on the national team, just returned from Hungary this year. And a younger son, who is 14 years old, who is, plays for the major Bantam Wildcats currently and is on the high-performance team for Hockey Nova Scotia. Thank you.
Thank you. Now where do we go? We're good? That's it? And so now, I guess it's Chad West?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I figured, yeah, I could introduce myself when we got into the IT section. So I assume that's where we are now, is IT? Perfect. So my name's Chad West. I'm the manager of IT. I live in Kentville and have two young kids and a wife as well. I won't spend too much more time introducing myself at this point, but I will introduce some folks behind me as well. On the far right here is Brian Bain, and next to him is Dan Keddie. They're part of the IT support team here. So hopefully, you don't have to see them very often. But if you do, that's who they are. And somebody at some point will show you where the IT room is. And we'll get into a bit of, if you have tech support questions, how to handle that. But I did at least want you to know who they were. And generally, they're fairly friendly and willing to help. So, and you can come to me as well. They're usually more available, so they're kind of the frontline people if you need support. If you can't find them, come to my office and I'll happily help you out as well. So we have a few things to go through from the technology side today. Before we get into the tablets and some of that side of things, we just want to talk a bit about the microphones and the voting situations. And if you look around, you'll see that there's four cameras. So there's two on this side of the room and two on that side of the room. It's all tied in together as part of the system of how the council chambers works. And that supports, obviously, the sound system for in the room, but as well feeding the sound to the YouTube feed. So we do broadcast council and committee, the whole meetings, as well as a few select other things to our YouTube channel, so that we can have some participation in that online as well.
Chad, I hate to interrupt you, but just before we go any further, I think I'll get the CAO to introduce Yanni and Haley also.
Oh, yes, of course.
That we maybe missed them.
My apologies. So now you get to say five things about yourselves, if you'd like to do that.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Haley Hutt. I provide kind of support in the background of the committee of the whole meetings and various other appointments. So you don't often hear from me, but you'll see me in the background, making sure mics and YouTube livestream and all of those things work. So happy to be here and be behind the screen and support you all.
Thank you.
And my name is Yanni Postima. I'm the municipal clerk for the County of Kings.
I've been here ten years. I'm originally from the Netherlands. My husband and I moved to Canada twenty-eight years ago. That's actually almost half my life, so getting there. We lived in Calgary first for fourteen years and fourteen years here in the valley. Absolutely love it here. And looking forward to working with you all. It's nice to see some new faces and some returning faces. And looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Kathy can probably introduce you. I'm sure doing the next section, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, Chad.
No, I feel bad that we forgot about Haley and Yanni. All right, so just talking a bit about the microphones and voting, that's kind of where we'll start. So you have used the microphones already, I believe, that Mayor Corcom has been, you've been enabling the mics for folks. Is that correct, when they've been speaking?
Uh, yeah, I got the five minutes yesterday. I'm an expert now.
It's been Haley, it's been Haley, I hear, so. Through the normal course of the meeting, I just want to, if you can all look at the mic in front of you, there's a few things there that you will use. Before we get into the things that you use for the meeting, if you look on the right-hand side, there's a, I think, no, the left-hand side, sorry. There's a little gray rocker button. Just point out that that's a volume button. There is a built-in speaker, so if you're having trouble hearing, you could attempt to adjust that. Sometimes that's not enough, but has everyone seen that? I think they're going around to help you if you haven't. Or if you find it's too loud, alternatively, you can turn it down. So just so aware of that. There's also two buttons, and Dan and Brian can kind of point them out to you if you want. One looks like a hand. That button, we don't use that button, so don't let it throw you off. The button that looks like a hand is just used for other purposes at other places. We don't use it. So the one you want, if you want to speak, you push the one that looks like a little talking thing. And if you push it and you look at Counselor Lutz's microphone there, it's now turned green. And we see Counselor McPherson's as well. That means that you're in the queue. And it will show up on Mayor Corcom's screen, as well as on the clerk's screen, saying that you would like to speak. And then speaking is handled in order through the microphone queue. So now if either Mayor Corcom or Haley were to pick the top person off the queue, we'll see in that instance whose microphone, do we have too many active, maybe? Turn mine off.
You can queue as many, you can have three active.
Oh, okay. So. Yeah. Oh, so there we can see that Counselor Sappington's microphone is on, and then it's her turn to speak.
Everett's next because he's blinking.
Ah, I see, I see.
So that's how the microphone system works. You don't really need to remember all of that, other than when you want to speak, you push the button that looks like someone speaking and you'll get your turn when it comes time to do it. Yanni, we'll get into a little bit later around the more of the procedural things with meetings and when you can speak and how often and that sort of stuff. But that's the tech side of things. For voting, there's buttons on the top of the microphone there. One looks like a plus and one looks like a minus. Or an X, sorry, not the minus one, the ones on either side. So the plus means yes and the X means no. So I don't know if we want to try a sample vote right now, so, yeah. Oh, sorry, it's the minus, the X is in the middle. Okay, yeah. I should have had a picture in front of myself, I guess. So we're going to do a sample roll call now, and I don't know if Yanni's gonna.
Actually, I wanted to bring up a picture of.
Oh, a picture of what it looks like. She's gonna display a picture and then we can. Okay, yes. So pluses for, minuses against. We're going to do roll call using the voting system now, so when your.
Okay, all in favor signify by pressing your button, I guess.
There. And we can see that everyone successfully voted that they're here, which is a good thing. Yeah, I confused folks now, I think.
Maybe we'll try one more. How about we try one more? All those in favor of it snowing tomorrow signify by pressing your button. What happened? It's coming. What's the, what's the matter with Robbie Hiltz? Go to your room.
So, so when the voting starts, you have ten seconds. The system's programmed to give you ten seconds. So do try to get your vote in occasionally. It won't register a vote or something will happen. And then Mr. Mayor here will handle that in some fashion, usually verbally or show of hand, confirming what you were meaning to vote. So if the technology fails you, just let the mayor know, I guess, is what I would say. Any questions about voting before we move on?
What's the X for?
Uh, the X, if you look on the screen, is just not used at all. So these systems are used at places like the UN or the federal government. They have other things they use those buttons for. Yeah.
That's a good question, though. So let's, let's, if a counselor votes in favor and they made a mistake, what can they do to correct that?
It's probably a better question for Yanni, but I believe verbally.
Uh, there would be two options in that case. You could, as the mayor, ask to have the vote taken again. That would certainly be an option. Or it can just be addressed verbally. That would be possible, too.
Thank you.
So the system does record the votes for that purpose, but they do manually record kind of the official record of the vote separately. So it could be changed. It doesn't have to match exactly with what the system says. So any questions before we move on to cameras? Yes?
I've caught myself different times reading and doing something I probably shouldn't have been, but the vote didn't count for me, so the mayor would have to look at me and say, which way you voting? So it has happened, not just to me, but it will happen to everybody sooner or later, but.
Okay. Haley, could you bring up the camera feed? Oh, nope. All right. Oh. I'm gonna. Went to you. There we go. So now I get to look at myself, which is super weird. During the normal flow of a meeting, there's cameras that will be tracking. They're not always broadcasting, so today they're not broadcasting to YouTube. This isn't being broadcast. Oh, we are broadcasting to YouTube. All right, there you go, regular committee of the whole meeting, so we are. We also broadcasted last night, however, we used fixed camera positions. So there's some flexibility with the system. So I guess I get to say hi to YouTube as well now, but.
So Counselor Hiltz just broadcast everybody in Kings County that he wants it to snow tomorrow?
Yes. So what we're going to do now, though, is we're going to just, I'm going to demonstrate a bit of how the system works, because there's a bit of a trick to making sure that the cameras are showing the right way. So the system works by being tied into the voting system. So we can see that when Counselor Pecford there was using his microphone, it switched the camera briefly to him, and then I was able to take over control by activating my mic again. So it kind of works like a stack of papers. That if you have, say, like, the first person, the first person with their microphone, it's going to show them on the camera. If someone else's microphone gets activated, they're now on top. And it's going to show them. When their microphone disappears, it's going to go back to who it was showing before. So if I disable mine now, let's see if it goes back to Counselor Pecford or Mayor Corcom. It should go back to Mayor Corcom. And if we activate it, there's a bit of a delay while it figures out what it's doing, and then it's showing me. So in the course of a meeting, it'll be often that there will be a dialogue back and forth between a presenter and members of council. So that's the only time, really, when you have to be aware of how the camera system works. So if you activate your microphone or get put in the queue and the mayor activates your microphone and you ask your question, it's best practice to then disable your microphone when you're done. Otherwise, what people are going to see on YouTube is your face watching the presenter answer your question. So just to be aware of that intricacy. It doesn't matter if it's not showing the right thing. It happens all the time. But just when you're talking, your microphone can be on when you're done. If you can turn your microphone off, which you can do by just pushing the speaking button. So if I push my button. Okay, we can take the camera thing off the screen now. All right. So any questions about the cameras or the microphone system before we get into some of the computer side of things? Nope. Okay, great. And otherwise, yeah, feel free to practice your, I wish to speak, and the mayor will enable your microphone. If you do have questions, as I go through the rest of it, or raise your hand to just get my attention. I don't want to go too fast for folks. So why don't you display the screen here now, Haley, and I'll, there we go. Yeah. I wasn't going to display any passwords or anything, but maybe we might want to. It's more about verbally, we're going to have, what I'll do actually, while we're doing this, we have a Wi-Fi password. I have it printed. I'll just pass it around and then it won't have to be said aloud. And if you can connect your cell phones using this Wi-Fi password, it's not for the tablets. But this is so you don't have to use your cell data in the building. And sometimes the signal can be a little off, so I'm going to pass that around. I think some of the re-elected members might already be connected, but. So while that's, while that's happening, I'm just going to talk a bit about security. So for those who aren't aware, I think most of you might be, we did have a security incident in twenty twenty-three. So we've been working very hard to address any gaps that were there. We can certainly get into it another time, any details about that event, if anyone is interested. However, what I just want to talk about right now is kind of the importance of security for municipal systems. So when you're working on your personal system, there is a connection into the larger corporate environment. So your machine is connected to our Microsoft three sixty-five environment, and there's access to files and information there. Some of it may be private. So keeping that information private and erring on the side of caution is important. I think everyone here would understand that. Systems in place to help with that. So one of them is around password complexity. So Dan and Brian helped you this morning set your password for your three sixty-five. If you do reset your password, it would ask you that you don't use common phrases like password or the month and those sort of things. Those are commonly used in hacking attacks. So try to use long, secure, unique passwords and not to share it with other accounts. Like, don't share your password that you use with us, with your banking account. Puts us in an awkward position if, you know, tell us your password sometime and it's the same as what you use on your banking account, for example, right? So try to keep it unique, and that will keep things secure. In addition to password security, we do have a couple of systems that we have in place for security. One is called Field Effect Covelance. So if you're ever looking on your system and you're so inclined, you might see a program running on there that's called Covelance Endpoint Agent. What that does is it interacts with the built-in Microsoft security systems. And it will actually centrally report to the IT team, as well as a twenty-four-seven monitoring team, if there was any sort of hacking activity, malicious software, any sort of other activity happening on your device. So that's fully monitored at all times. And in extreme situations, if, say, someone was to access your device and start downloading all of the confidential information off the device, the agent will actually disconnect your device from the internet, isolate it, and prevent that from occurring. So we still need to be careful and make sure that we're not, you know, installing malicious software and things on the device. But we do have systems in place that if that were to happen, it will mitigate the impacts. So that's what that is, if you see that running. We're also, because, you know, the first line of defense is really everybody practicing good security practices, we do have security training for everybody that will be sent around. It's fifteen-minute training modules. There's four of them. They don't take long to do. The returning counselors, it will be a bit of a refresher for you. And for the new folks, hopefully you can learn something from that. So I do ask that you take some time to complete that. It will come in your email. And what you need to do is just click on the link to activate your account. So that's going to come, be sent around later today. We do ask that you at least activate your account fairly quickly because the link expires. So if you don't activate your account in time, then you'll have to come back and ask Dan or Brian to send you a new link and stuff like that. So once you activate, you can take as long as you'd like within a reasonable amount of time to do the training. But I do ask that you activate the account, because that will make things simpler. If your password, or if the link does expire, just send us an email and we'll fix it for you. The training will review this for you, but we do have some specific things that we would ask. If you ever receive an email and you're not sure, is this email malicious? Is it, you know, something that you want some extra insight to? We can help with that. So we do have a special mailbox set up for that. And it's called fish@countyofkings.ca. If you start typing fish, not with an F, but with a PH in your Outlook, it will auto-complete that for you. And you just forward the email to fish@countyofkings.ca. And then we'll get a copy of it and we can have a look and let you know. Also, the training system will send around some simulated phishing emails to kind of make sure everyone is aware of what those are. If you report a simulation email, it'll just record it in your training that, yep, you correctly identified the phishing email. If you click on a link in the simulations, you'll get assigned an additional course as a refresher. So I believe Emily Lutz has a question, or Counselor Lutz, I suppose.
I answered it either. Thanks. So just to reinforce what Chad just said, like, that your email is trying to trick you into clicking on fake things. So, and I consider myself pretty tech savvy, having grown up with the internet, and I get tricked sometimes. So you kind of be super careful what you, what you click on. Because as soon as you click on it, it's like you've made a big mistake and then you have to take a course again. Or, and then they keep reminding you about your course. So I, yeah, I just wanted to put it in, no offense, Chad, planer language. Because when you said simulation, I was like, I don't think they're, you know, that the whole idea that like we are sending you fake emails to try and trick you is, was super clear. Sorry. But, yeah, some of them are very convincing. It's not just like, I need an iTunes gift card. Can you send me thirty bucks? It's like, some of them look like they're coming from Microsoft, some of them look like they're coming from constituents or other organizations we might be part of, so they're very convincing. So just be on your, stay on your toes, I guess. And if you have questions, ask Chad. Or Dan or Brian.
Thank you, Counsel Lutz. I appreciate the clarification. Certainly, if my language is too IT speak, let me know at any time, and I can try to translate. And the last thing I'd like to talk about on security, and this is new for this council. We actually haven't rolled this out fully with all staff yet. We have some staff using this and now you as well and later for the staff in the room that you're, you'll be aware, coming for you as well. We're now moving all accounts to use multi-factor authentication, which hopefully most people may have had experience with multi-factor authentication with their Gmail or some other account. And that basically, multi-factor authentication is, in addition to a username and password, some additional factor that shows that you prove who you are. And usually that's through, like, when you get those codes texted to you that say, like, code three zero five one or whatever, type this in. That's a form of multi-factor authentication. So in order to get access to your email account. So in order to get access to your email account, any of the accounts that are accessible online, we do need you to install what's called the Microsoft Authenticator app on your mobile device. Originally, I was thinking we might try to do that here, but I think rather, there's a time this afternoon, so I'd just ask for IT support if everybody could stop by the IT room when you're done with your other things today at some point in the afternoon, and we'll help you get the Authenticator app set up, make sure you can get logged into your email, and that everything is good. We can do that one-on-one, just so we don't take too much time here. And the way that will work is that when you first log into one of your Microsoft accounts, you'll put in your username and password. And once you've put in your username and password, it will then pop up a message on your phone and say, "I've noticed that you're trying to log into your Microsoft account. Confirm by entering this two-digit number that this is you and you mean to do this." And if you do that, it'll let you into your account. After you've done that the first time, it's not going to ask you for that on the same device again, so every time you log in, you're not going to have to do that. It'll only do it if you log in, say, from a new device, like your home computer or something like that. So that's how that system works. If people have questions about it or any trouble, because this is relatively new for the municipality, do reach out and let us know, and we'll get it sorted out for you. So cell phones, while we're on the topic of the Authenticator app, I just wanted to mention that everybody did sign the mobile device policy there and the network policy. And those policies just outline a few things. But one thing I did want to highlight specifically for cellphone use is that we do, as a municipality under the province of Nova Scotia, have some legal requirements related to freedom of information, protection of privacy, and an act that's called, PITPA is the acronym, but it's the Protection of Personal Information and, I'm going to forget what the other "I" is, Disclosure of Personal Protection Act. I think I totally messed up with that acronym. All you need to understand is that that act outlines where and when and how we can access information that relates to residents of the province of Nova Scotia and how we can disclose that information to others. And I think everyone should be familiar, at least with the Freedom of Information requests. So because of those regulations, we do ask that you conduct your municipal business through your municipal email. It's okay to text other councillors or to text the CAO, but it's not good practice to get into big discussions through text around municipal business. The issue if you do that is, is then when we receive a FOIPAP request that say, "I want to have all the information that you guys have about this specific topic," if you've had a big discussion with, say, the CAO about this on your phone, you're going to have to turn over your phone for a while while we get copies of your texts. If it's through your email, when you send those types of questions or to any other staff, we have access to the logs for the email, and we actually have a records management specialist. So when we get those types of requests, she can run a big search on keywords through our email, and it will pull all that information back. Also, if you're comfortable using Teams, Teams does have a messaging facility. It will also search those messages. So for instant messaging, the Teams messaging is also available to you. So I know the blind can be a little fuzzy sometimes. We do ask people to use their best judgment because text is pretty convenient, we do know. But just to be aware that it's not something that we have access to search and could mean needing to have physical access to the device in case of legal issues or FOIPAP. Yes, Counselor Gates?
Sensitivities if you're in camera?
Yes. So sensitivities around discussing that information outside of camera?
Yeah, like, it's not, if it's on, if it's printed, it's not available, you know, if you're in camera.
Right. So it's a good question because I'm going to roll into that topic now for the information. I do believe there'll be a little more education on the in-camera sessions and what you can and cannot discuss. But from the technology side, for information that's made available for in-camera sessions, we do have a special site, it's a SharePoint site. And what I'm going to ask you all to do, actually, if I share this screen, I will show you how to access that information right now. So at the top of your desktop, you'll see a few bookmarks. These are Chrome bookmarks. The first one here, we did notice that the background on this is a little bit hard to read that. We can change the color on the text for you if you want, or Dan also has a version of the background that's black, if you want a black background, because I know I struggle to read the white-ish text on the white background. But the first one here is the Council Secure Site. So if you wanted to have access to the secure site with all of the information that would be discussed in in-camera meetings, you can double-click on that. Right now, you're not logged into your Microsoft 365, I do believe, so it's probably asking you all to sign in. Is that, did anyone try that? Yeah, and it's asking you to sign in? Okay. So you can see it here, and then when we do your authentication, we can sort that out later. So you can see all of the information here on the Council Secure Site. However, you're not going to be able to access the information through your web browser. So what we've done instead, and what's going to make it very easy for you to view this information, is in your File Explorer, just like any other folder that you'd have on your computer, if you're familiar with that, we have this thing called County of Kings down here. I'm going to make this bigger so everyone can see. Why is this not wider? You'll see on the left-hand side, you'll, you will all see this on your own device. It should be there now already in your File Explorer, a folder called Council Secure Documents. If you click on that, you're going to see all of the same stuff that was on the SharePoint site. I'm going to come to this side and make sure people have found out. They won't have access to that until you all, through the app, right? You have to authenticate them? Or they don't have sync. Sync, but they still, they help you in their password. Okay. I thought it would be synced and still there. So has everyone found that folder? You won't be able to open the documents until we have you...
Yeah.
All right. So that, those folders are just for the secure information, so when you have to discuss something that is in camera, everyone can see that folder. Once we get you authenticated and logged in with the Authenticator app, you will then have access to all those files. That's one of the layers of security. We have some additional layers of security for information that's discussed in camera, so that all those files are protected with a certificate, which is just a piece of code which locks that file to your device. So it will not allow you to print the file, it will not allow you to, well, you theoretically could send the file to someone else, but when they receive it, they're not going to be able to open it. Please don't try that and send it to them anyway. But it does mean that, so the one practical thing with that is you won't be able to look at the secure documents from your home computer, you won't be able to look at the secure documents on your phone, you need to use your municipal tablet to look at the secure documents. That's the only way that you're able to do that. And that's just for security reasons, for specifically those items which are discussed in camera. I will mention that, so that secure document site is managed through a system with Microsoft called SharePoint. Municipal staff do use other SharePoint sites with varying levels of security. Some are for public information, some are for internal information. What you might see is if you receive some information from municipal staff, it might be a link to a document in a SharePoint site. So if you receive an email and it has a link, that's what it is. It's a piece of information shared from SharePoint. You all also have your own OneDrive account, so your documents folder on your machine is synchronized to OneDrive. And I think Counselor Lutz actually noticed this when she logged into her machine because she was re-elected. All of her information from her old machine just magically appeared on her new machine. So that's how we keep all of your information secure and backed up. If you ever delete a file or you make a mistake somewhere, we can recover that information for you. So just reach out if there's ever a mistake or something gets corrupted. It's all backed up. We do have multiple layers of backups. We do a backup every night ourselves, as well as the Microsoft system does keep, as you make changes to a document, it keeps versions and you can roll back to a previous version. So we're more than happy to help if you need any help with that. So in addition to SharePoint and OneDrive, the Microsoft ecosystem has all of the other Office products that you're probably all familiar with, with One, with OneDrive, Word, Outlook, all of that sort of stuff. So that's the program suite that you'll be using. If you haven't used those programs before, feel free to talk to us. I figure, is there anyone who hasn't used that kind of Microsoft products before? So we can certainly do a more in-depth training if needed. Okay, that's kind of what I figured. Okay. So, something that is, we're almost at the end of the IT section, so thanks for bearing with me here. A couple other things to point out on your tablet itself. I guess I skipped over a section. I was going to mention a few things to you about the tablet, and I got too excited about the software side of things. But you'll notice your tablets have this little kickstand at the back. I think everyone's figured out now already that you need to flip that out in order for it to stay up. So if you, when you close it, you can close that in. If you try to open it, like a laptop, it's just going to fall down, of course, right? So just be aware of that. This is a tablet, and what that means is that the keyboard is fully detachable, so you can just kind of rip it off. It's not going to break anything. If you do that, you can, you can rotate it, and you can see that it's going to behave more like a tablet would. So if you're, you know, have a lot of documents to read for the next upcoming council meeting and you want to sit it on your deck and just read it like a book, that's the idea there. You can, you can have a little bit more flexibility. And you do all have a pen as well, and the programs do support, you know, to kind of mark up and highlight things with a pen. So the pen is a secret for everyone. Pull down on your keyboard, and you'll see that there's a little slot back there for your pen. It does feel like you're going to break it, but yeah. And since, since this is not actually my device, I don't use this a lot, but I do believe if the pen's not working, you push the thing, I believe you push the eraser and it will make sure that it's on. There is a little battery inside the pen, so if it ever stops working for you, just let us know and we'll replace the battery for you.
Chad, the new pens are rechargeable in the keyboard there?
Okay, there you go. See, this is, we don't use these sort of ones. The keyboard will recharge your pen for you on the new ones, I guess. These old ones required batteries. So we'll, we'll review Outlook when we get your account set up and logged into Outlook, but something I do want, especially for the returning councillors, I want to mention this. I feel a little bit bad about it because we've been dealing with it for staff for a little while. Some of our accounts, the traditional classic Outlook has been crashing. So to avoid all of you having to deal with that, there is a new version of Outlook. So if you're familiar with the old version of Outlook, we've now switched you to the new version of Outlook. When we hear back from Microsoft about a solution for the crashes, and we're confident that nobody's Outlook's going to crash, if you prefer the old Outlook, you can let us know and we will switch you back. I would just say, in the meantime, don't manually switch yourself back to the Outlook. You might suffer from some of the crashing issues. It's been an ongoing issue with Microsoft. So we're attempting to solve it, but it's been a bit tricky. So all of your email addresses, when you log in, you're going to log in with your email address, which is counselor dot your last name except for the mayor, and that's mayor.corkum@countyofkings.ca. And that's the same for all of your accounts, except for when you're logging into your local tablet. That's your email address and your login to all your accounts and everything. And the rest of email and all of that is very similar to what you would be used to from using it in other places. One exception for the returning councillors, and this is where I'll show you the second desktop icon that we have here. This icon is the councillor's calendar. So with the classic Outlook, we were able to synchronize this calendar to your Outlook, and you could get that view in there. The new Outlook that we have installed for you does not support this, so we've just added a link to your desktop that will take you to the site that displays the councillor calendar. When we sort out the Outlook issues, if you would like it, return to the old one and synced, we can, we can set that up at that time. Until then, you just use that link and it'll take you right there. While we're talking about these links, the third one here is a link directly to the County of Kings website, specifically to the page which has all of our mapping applications. So I did want to highlight these to you because it's been frequent in the past that people will ask questions about, "My sidewalk's a mess. How do I get it fixed?" Or, "My road wasn't plowed. How do I get that dealt with?" So one of the maps here, so we have the Public Atlas, which has a lot of information, and you can definitely take some time to explore that, turn layers on, and there's zoning information and all that sort of stuff. A great resource for people. Definitely reach out to staff for help, particularly when it comes to things like zoning. We have lots of staff here to help answer those questions. But for your own curiosity, if you just want to quickly see information that's available on the map, you can do that. But then the second one here is the Road and Sidewalk Maintenance App. So we've made that one available to the public as well as yourselves. So if someone reaches out to you and asks questions about, "Who's responsible for my road? Is this provincial? Is it municipal?" You can go into the map here, and then you're going to see a map of the entire county with some color coding, and you can click on different segments of the roads, and it will tell you who's responsible for that piece of road. So this one in particular is Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, is the owner. Winter maintenance, unknown maintenance responsibilities because it's a provincial road. Some of them, there's arrangements in place, so because it's provincial, don't always assume that that's the case. You just go in and check, and it will tell you. Or call, and someone will help you with that, or email someone at the, at the office here. All right. Last piece of information. So you all received last night your key fobs. So you have a key fob that looks like this. This key fob gets you access to the building here. It works 24/7. So if you forgot something here and you need to come in late to get it, you can do that. We do ask that if you come in off-hours and as you're leaving, just double-check that the door closes behind you so it doesn't get left open all night if it gets stuck with some ice or something like that. This will get you into this building as well as the Engineering Operations Building. It won't get you into, like, secure operation areas like water treatment plants and stuff like that. So just the main kind of office areas. And these are about $20, $25 each, so not, not extremely cheap, but relative to what they protect, very cheap. So do not be ashamed if you lose it. Immediately just reach out and tell us, and we'll get you a new one. There won't be any judgment. We much rather that people tell us right away. Even if you lost it and it's in your house somewhere and you're not quite sure, just tell us, we'll get you a new one. If you find the old one, we can take it back or reactivate it or whatever. That just makes sure that someone doesn't get access to the building who shouldn't have access. And on that note, please don't keep it with some information that says, like, the address of the building. So if you drop it and someone finds it, now they've got to go around everywhere and try it. If it has our address on it, they know right where to go and where to get in. So that's just an extra security feature as well, not to do that. And that's all the information I had for today. I'm sure I've skimmed over something or missed something, so we do have time for you to have one-on-one sessions with us in the afternoon and also tomorrow, if you, if you can't do that this afternoon. And if you do have any questions, concerns, issues for your whole time here as councillors, we do have an email address. It's helpdesk@countyofkings.ca. Again, if you just start typing "help" in your email, it will autocomplete to helpdesk, and that will go to myself and Dan. And that will go to myself and Dan and Brian and we'll get back to you with an answer to your question. If you're in the office or it's during work hours and you're somewhere else, you can call one of us or just stop by the IT room, we'll be happy to help you. So that's all the information I had. I know it just says that these two days are gonna be, it's a lot of information. So happy to answer any questions now if there was any, otherwise we can help later.
Want to have any questions? Clear, go ahead.
What emails from Yanni still go to our home email address or come now to our laptop?
It's probably a Yanni question, but definitely coming to your laptop. I don't know if there's any instances where she would still send a personal email. No, so always to your municipal email account now, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Happy to have you all here, welcome.
So now is it Kathy Nichols?
Good morning, council. I'm Kathy Nichols. I'm the Human Resource Manager here at the County of Kings. I've been in this role for just over five years, but have been at the municipality for 17 years. Previous to my role here, I worked 16 years in the accounting office. So if you do the math, I started working when I was about 10. Just want to welcome everybody. Nice to see the new faces and look forward to working with you all. As you all probably saw, I left a little packet at your workspace if you were new to council. Just some forms for payroll purposes. So if you could have those completed and filled out and to me by end of day Monday, that would be great. I'll be around all day today, tomorrow and Monday. If you need some help, feel free to stop by my office and if you have any questions about any of those things. What I'm gonna do today is just briefly go over our council handbook. It's a nice resource, tell you a little general information about the county and a little bit about payroll and benefits and how that works. Just a little quick shout-out to Rob Frost, who had this great idea to kind of take our employee handbook and switch it around a bit and make a council handbook. So I think it's been a great resource for our staff. So it'll be a great resource, I think, for council as well. So I'm just gonna kind of scroll through here. It starts, I'm just gonna do a real high level. You'll each have a link to this, so you'll be able to go through it on your own. The table of contents, it's all, if you click on any section of it, it'll take you right to that section. So if you're looking for something particular, you can just click on it and it'll find, you'll find it quickly. So first is just a welcome to our organization, a link to our strategy for belonging with the municipality. Just a quick overview of what you'll find in, what the municipality does and what you'll find in this handbook. Also, again, speaking a little bit to the strategy for belonging, please take some time to read, click the link and learn about that if you haven't already. Our strategic plan and our vision, mission and values are listed here. Strategic plan priorities, which were developed by council, which maybe will be changing in the future when this council gets together and, and looks at this. But this is what they currently are and just a very small snippet of information about each, each strategic plan priority. Chad spoke a little bit about the FOIPOP. So this is just a little, talks about freedom of information and just to keep that in mind when you're sending correspondence. Now this screen, I'm not sure if I can, oh, here we go. Flip this, flip this around. This is just a, an organizational chart that shows the structure. So it starts with Mayor and Council, the CAO and the staff that reports directly to the CAO and then the, the five different departments, Finance, IT, Planning and Inspection Services, Engineering Public Works, Environmental Services and Office of the Deputy CAO. I won't get too much into this here as we have separate org charts as we, as we move on here. This is the map for the Electoral Districts for Council, which was just updated last year. So it just shows in green District 1, 2, 3. So it just shows sort of a very high-level picture of the districts. There's a link down below here to the Committees of Council. So if you, there's, it's quite exhaustive, so we won't go through those. But if you want to click on there, it shows all, it takes you to our website, which lists the Committees of Council. It shows the organizational charts for each department. Office of the Chief Administrative Officer, it has pictures. So this will help you when you're getting to know staff. You'll be able, you can click up the org chart, you'll be able to put a, a face with a name. A little brief description below of each employee's role as well, very high-level. Office of the Deputy CAO as well, there's the same and it goes through and we have Finance and IT. Description of the roles that, in Finance and IT, Planning and Inspection Services and Engineering Public Works. Again, description of what they do and Environmental Services. We've also added here council conduct and policies. So these are quick links. So if you're looking for any policies directly related to council, all of our policies are on our website, but this is maybe you might be able to find specific ones related to council here a little quicker. So they're there. Click the, anything that's blue, click the link and it'll take you right to the policy on the website. Confidentiality, we'll have, I'm not sure if that was left in your package last night to sign confidentiality agreements, but we'll have those for you to sign as well. I know you've done the network policy agreement. Compensation of benefits. So payroll is done, paid by direct deposit, bi-weekly. So I'm gonna need a direct deposit form from everyone. Our next pay date is November the 8th. So we'll need, that's why we need the information by Monday. We have to get it, the payroll processed and to the bank by Wednesday in order to have the deposit for Friday. And also for your information here, we've listed all the holidays where the municipal offices are closed. Just so if you have any questions about, you know, when we're open and when we're not, they're all listed here. Group insurance, there's a group insurance form also in your packet on your desk. A link to our Blue Cross booklet. We've done a little bit of benefits at a glance that tells you kind of high-level of what the benefits include. Every council is $25,000 of life insurance. We have health and dental coverage as well. Currently, our plan is, covers up to age 65 if you retire. Retirement benefits to 65 and 70 years of age if you're currently working. We did have a discussion four years ago, council, and a mandate that we look into that. So we are looking into whether we will be changing the 70 to 75. Just waiting to hear back from our carriers on that as to cost and whether, whether that will even be an option for us. So we'll keep you posted on that. Health coverage, hospital coverage for a private room. Our drug coverage is you pay your dispensing fee. So there's no surcharge. So just keep in mind where you, where you get your drugs dispensed will matter, what you pay. Some places are a little bit cheaper than others for their dispensing fees. So it's, it's not a percentage of your cost, it's the dispensing fee you pay for your drugs.
Kathy, could I have one quick question on, on your, your coverage? You mentioned dental and things. Over, over 70 does not count. Does, do you have any staff that are over 70 years old?
Currently, we have one part-time staff that had retired and is back helping us for a little bit. But other than that, no.
Okay, thank you.
So back to healthcare. So vision, $250 every two calendar years. There's a little typo here. It says eye exam is $100. It's now been updated that it's whatever the cost is of your eye exam it will cover. It doesn't cap at $100 and laser eye surgery. Hearing aids every three years, paramedical. We have a $500 per practitioner and physiotherapist and athletic therapist. It's what's reasonable and customary. So there's no $500 cap on the physiotherapist and athletic therapist, mainly because those are more helping you recover from an injury or a surgery. You usually have physiotherapy, so that's not capped because, you know, it's gonna probably take you more than $500 worth of coverage to, to get your full get-back recovered from that injury. So there's no cap on that. Mental health practitioners, $2,500 per calendar year. So each of these limits I'm giving is for each member in your plan. So if you had a spouse and children, they would each have the $2,500 or the $500 per practitioner. We also have Telus Healthcare as part of our group coverage. So it's virtual, a virtual doctor. So you can, once you get your Blue Cross card, you can log in and you would have access 24/7 to a mental health or, mental health practitioner or a doctor to help you with any illnesses you do have. There's links here, how to create it if you want, how to have an app on your phone, the brochure that tells you a little bit more about it, what, what it covers for employee assistance programs and how to set up your Telus Health account. So the EAP program covers a lot of things. They give you financial advice, legal advice, medical advice. So it's, it's a really great program, so maybe take some time to have a look at that. I'll also be adding a link here to a short video we have that our, our folks that run our programs have done and it tells you verbally a little bit more about the program, so it's very helpful. So we'll be adding that link shortly. Also focusing on wellness, we have a wellness program. Each staff member and council member is allocated $175 per year for some type of wellness to promote a healthy lifestyle. So you, if you buy something health-related, maybe a gym membership, maybe you need tennis shoes, snow shoes, something that promotes active living. You can take your receipt, give it to payroll and they will add that $175 back to you on your payroll. Or we also have a, an account set up at Valley Stovens Cycle in Kenfield, Cleaves in New Minas and Sports Check in New Minas, where if you're a member of councillor staff of the municipality, you can just go in and charge $175 and just bring us back the receipt. And that way you don't have to have the out-of-pocket expense initially. So the links to the forms that you need, again, are all here in blue. So just click the form and it will, it will print for you. Computer purchase program. We have a computer purchase program also at the municipality to help folks to be sure they have the technology they need. Click to the, this is an IT policy. You can click, click the link and it takes you there. You can purchase a computer for home use and it's paid back through payroll deduction. There's different options to how long you want the payments to be, a year or two years. That's your choice and you work it out with Greg, who is the Director of Finance and IT. Just a note on sickness and COVID. We still ask staff to take sick time, not to come in the office or work from home if they have COVID. Still take the five days because we don't want it to, you know, kind of run through the office. And anybody that, even if it's not COVID, if you're sick, still, you know, stay home first couple of days until you're, you know, feel a little bit that you're not spreading the germs. So we still kind of have that sickness awareness here. Just a building evacuation procedure. Take some time to have a look at this. It includes a map, it shows the building, it shows where our exits are. We have first aid stations as well, which I think are also gonna come later in this booklet. Panic buttons, so there is a panic button. Here's a picture of it that should be under the mayor's desk there. And mayors or CAOs or a combination. Maybe take a look because we don't want you to hit that accidentally and have... Can you see it? Oh, it's under yours, okay. It's under the CAOs, okay. All right. First aid station, so if we have a first aid kit out here in the main lobby and one down by the kitchens in the back, feel free if you're here and you need something. They're really great. They have a lot of everything that you can imagine and a first aid kit is in there. So they're really great. We have assesses, a couple of accessibility features in our washrooms. Just tells you here how the locking mechanisms work. You know, make sure when you go in, you hit the lock so, and then it shows out that it's in use. On the outside, it, it lights up and shows. We don't have a, we're not sent-free here, but we do have a sent-reduction, sent-awareness SOP. So take a minute to have a look at that. It's basically just, you know, try not to add that extra layer. You know, we're not asking that everything that you use has to be sent-free, but just be conscious that some folks here do have sent, sent, sent sensitivities. As well as dogs and pets. There's staff as well that have sensitivities to dogs and pets. So we ask that they don't come in the building. They can come into the lobby when folks are getting their dog tags and whatnot, but not through, through the whole building. Just a note on our kitchen cleanliness, we all kind of work together to keep the kitchen clean. So just, just some points about that. Weather closures, we have a storm day procedure. Now with the remote work option that we do have, we don't, everybody continues to work when there's a storm. There is no, you know, when the building's closed, we're still behind the scenes working, just working from a different location. Chad talked about the login and email accounts. I won't spend any time with that and the swipe, office keys and swipe cards. We do have a small fitness room at the back. There's a couple showers there and a couple treadmills. And we have a booking calendar for folks that want to use it, which it's more, it's busier, of course, in the winter than through the, through the nice summer months. Parking, just note about parking, you know, try your best to pack into your parking spaces. Just makes it easier when you're coming out and just talks about the traffic flow. And reception services, our front desk is manned 8:30 to 4:30 every day. The main line phone number is here as well as our toll-free number. So we do have a toll-free number that residents can call. And if you have mail that needs to go, there is a, there is a spot by, in, up front for it to put your mail and we'll make sure it gets mailed for you. And just a couple of forms that you may need, frequently used forms, mileage in business. If you're using your own vehicle and traveling about, the forms are here for you to use. There's a PDF version, it's also an Excel if you just want to enter it on the Excel and, and do it that way or if it print it and, or print the PDF and write on it, that's fine too, either way. And then just a quick link to those forms I talked about for the wellness allowance. So that is the booklet. If you find in your orientation as you get going on, there's other things that you would find useful to be in the booklet, just let me know, be happy to add some things that you might find useful. And also, like I said, please feel free to stop by if you have questions about any of the forms that you have to fill out. I'll be available. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Gates? Yes?
Once we fill out our group insurance, is there a time period in between?
No, it's immediate.
It's immediate.
Yeah, it starts from day one.
Thank you.
Yep. And just to a note, just so that you understand how our payroll works as well. It, on the Friday, the 8th that you, where our pay gets in, you're paid up till that Friday. So this first payroll will be for the full week next week and then the, is it three days, three days this week will be on the first pay. And then there'll be the bi-weekly after that.
I, I feel really silly. Am I the only one that doesn't know how to access the handbook that you're talking about? It seems like a really great resource, I just don't know where to get it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, or councillor Sappington. I believe Yanni sent the, oh, you didn't?
Okay, good.
Okay.
I thought I was the only one out of the loop, okay.
I'll send out an email with the link to, link to that for you. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks Haley for putting it up on the screen. Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Nice to see you again, I'm glad you all came back after last night. I'm just going to be presenting a brief introduction to municipal government. I actually thought about dropping the brief because it did turn into more slides than I had anticipated, but I should be able to go through them fairly quickly. Don't let that stop you from asking any questions at any time, just to turn on your light and I'll be happy to answer any questions I can. See if the clicker works. So just to very briefly reiterate what Chad already covered, your mics, you push the button if you wish to speak, the button that looks like someone speaking, I'm not sure if it's someone speaking or an air, I've never really been able to figure that out, but you know which button I'm talking about. And the plus and minus buttons are to vote in favor or against. Motions, the, as soon as the recording secretary activates the voting, the button will flash so that, you know, at that point you're able to vote, and then you'll have 10 seconds to, to cast your votes. So the next slides are on meeting procedure. So first of all, because we are talking about microphones, so the chair controls the microphones. The chair will activate the mics normally in the order that the requests were submitted. The mayor's able to see that on his screen with what the order is. And if some councillors have already spoken once, the mayor or whoever's in the chair will make every effort to allow councillors who have not spoken yet to spoke, to speak before any other councillors speak a second time. And councillors and, and staff as well address their, any remarks, any questions they have through the chair. So you would say something along the lines of through you, Mayor, or through you, Chair, to councillor so-and-so. That's the proper meeting protocol that we use. Chad already talked about live streams, so we are live streaming this meeting because it is a committee of the whole meeting, all meetings of council, committee of the whole, the planning advisory committee, and public hearings are livestreamed. They all happen in council chambers, so they're all livestreamed on YouTube. As Chad explained on, about the cameras, the camera is on the mic that was last activated. So when your mic is active, when it shows red, like mine, you can assume that you're on camera. And as Chad explained, you know, sometimes when there's a back and forth, the camera will, you know, if my mic has been activated first because I'm presenting, if any of you would then have their mic activated, it will go to you. And then so, as long as your mic is still on, even if I'm speaking again, I will not be on camera. So that's just something to keep in mind, if you think of it, to turn off your mic when you're, when you're done speaking. And any videos of the live streams are available on our website and on YouTube following the meetings. So a little bit about the difference between committee of the whole and council. We're meeting in committee of the whole today because committee of the whole does not make any actual decisions. Council is the, the body that, that makes decisions. So it's the same group of people, but it's, the meetings are of a different nature. Committee of the whole is very much for discussion, to receive information, there will be a lot of staff reports presented to you during committee of the whole. And committee of the whole then makes recommendations to council. So there are no final decisions made by committee of the whole. What committee of the whole will do is, for example, make a motion to receive information, to receive a staff report or a presentation. But any other motions are recommendations to council, and then council will consider those recommendations at the, at the next meeting. Council also considers recommendations from other committees of council. There's a long list of, of other committees. So typically on both agendas, obviously we always start with roll call, approval of the agenda, standard agenda item is conflict of interest. It's an opportunity for members of council to declare a conflict of interest on any agenda items if there, if there are any. Approval of minutes, of course, is always on the agenda. And at a committee of the whole, we often have external presentations, so community groups or organizations coming in to provide presentations. On both agendas, there will be staff reports, we refer to those of RFDs and briefings. RFD stands for request for decision, so that's actually asking a decision from you, and briefings are just for information. Both agendas will have board and committee reports. All the boards and committees that councillors sit on, you are required to report back on any meetings that have taken place at the next committee of the whole or council meeting, whichever one comes first. There's usually some correspondence on the agenda, comments from the public is always an item at the end of every council and committee of the whole meeting. Members of the public can, can come in, can up, come up to the mic and speak on, on items that they wish to speak on. It doesn't mean that they have to sit through the whole meeting, but it's, it's always at the end of the agenda, and then of course adjournment. And so the bylaws related to these two bodies is bylaw 52 is the committee of the whole bylaw, and bylaw 64 applies to both committee of the whole and, and council and other committees as well, and that's our meetings and procedure bylaw, and I'll be talking more about that on our next slide. So bylaw 64 is an important bylaw for you to get familiar with, that's our meetings and procedure bylaw, and it outlines procedures for both council and committees, and committee meetings such as quorum, speaking, voting, the rules of debate, points of order, motions, amendments, decorum. And also, it also outlines the, the process for the selection of a deputy mayor, which we'll be doing at our meeting on Tuesday, November the 5th. So anything that is not covered in either the municipal government act or in bylaw 64, we refer to Bruno's Rules of Order. So you will have found that little booklet on your, on your desk. So we use Bruno's part, the fourth revised edition, and then we only use part two of Bruno's. And so have a look at, at part two when you have a chance, makes for some good bedtime reading, I'm sure. Clarification and debate, so it's our usual practice that following a presentation, it can be a staff presentation or an, an external presentation, council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of clarification. So they can direct those questions to staff or to the presenter, but as I've mentioned before, they would ask those questions through the chair. And at the point when there are no more questions of clarification, the presenter will remove themselves from the podium and they don't participate in the debate. So it has to be clear that when it comes to the, the moment when council starts its debate, the presenter is, is no longer involved. And that's usually the, the moment that the chair will ask for a motion. Council and committees can meet in public and in closed session. All meetings of council and all committee meetings are public. And council and committees can only meet in closed session, also referred to as in-camera, if it pertains to items listed under section 22 subsection 2 of the municipal government act. And the eight topics or categories are, are on your screen, you know, things like personnel matters, contract negotiations, legal advice, those are items when council or a committee can, can move into closed session. At that point, only relevant staff stay in the, in the room, so anyone who, any staff that are involved in, in that particular topic. And the closed sessions obviously are not livestreamed. We do take audio recordings of the closed sessions, and that's really only for the purpose of, of taking minutes, because we do take minutes of, of closed sessions as well. I should note that, as you may have heard, there's a new provincial code of conduct being, being developed that will be before this council very soon for, for adoption. And that code of, that new code of conduct for elected municipal officials will include the discussion of code of conduct matters in closed session, so that will be an additional, additional category. And I should also note that our municipal solicitor, who will be presenting tomorrow morning, will talk a lot more about closed sessions, so this is just a high-level overview of that. Next is motions. Council makes decisions by motion. Motions have to be not just moved, but seconded as well. If a motion is not seconded, the motion is lost, the motion basically doesn't exist. All members of council present must vote, that goes for committees as well. If a council member does not vote, that vote is deemed as a negative vote, so it's a against vote. If a council member is just temporarily out of their seat, maybe you can't wait for your next coffee, or you really need that washroom break, if it's just a few minutes, that, that vote, your absence will not count as a negative vote, it would simply not be counted at all. And of course it's possible that there's a tie, you know, we have 10 members of council, let's say the, the vote is five to five, then the motion fails, it's deemed as a failed motion at that point. Little bit more about motions. In general, there are two categories of motions, procedural motions and substantive motions. The, the terms kind of speak for themselves. Procedural motions, for example, a motion to recess, or a motion to change the order of the agenda, or a motion to adjourn. Most procedural motions are not debatable, so if someone were to move, you know, I would like a recess at this point, and if there's a second for that motion, then at that point council votes and there's no, no debate on it. Substantive are also called main motions. Most of those motions are based on staff recommendations, so you will receive, as I mentioned, staff reports, and those staff reports will have a recommended motion. Of course, it's up to, to council whether they vote on the motion as, as presented in that report. There are amendments possible, but most motions that are, are on the floor during these meetings are based on staff recommendations. So as I already mentioned, request for decision reports, or just a staff briefing, in which case the motion is just to receive the briefing for information. If a council member has an urgent matter they would like to have added to the agenda, they can do so at the time of approval of the, the agenda. It does require a two-thirds majority to have something added to the agenda, and it has to be of an, an urgent or pressing nature. Any other motions that a council member wishes to have debated at, at, at a council meeting, that council member has to give notice of motion, and they can do that at one meeting, and they can say, I would like to have this discussed at, at the next meeting, or at a, at a meeting in the, in the future. There's also an option for members of council to add agenda items to the committee of the whole agenda, and we have a form for that. In that long list of links that I, that I sent out, there's a link to the, the form that you can submit to request an item to be added to the committee of the whole agenda. So I talked about a two-thirds majority just now to have urgent matters added to the agenda. Most motions only require what is called a majority vote, so that's half of the council members present plus one, so if everyone's present, half of council is five, plus one is six, so six would be considered a, a majority vote. It is possible that a council member, even though they're present, is not able to vote, and that's for example, if that council member has declared a conflict of interest, then they are not able to vote on that motion. Another situation can be where a council member was not present during a public hearing, and then when that planning matter that was presented at the public hearing comes to council, that council member is not able to vote on that planning matter. So when I talk about, you know, half of council members present, those that are actually able to vote on the motion. A little bit about attendance. Absence from three consecutive regular meetings without council's permission will result in dismissal, so that's sort of the three strikes, you're out rule, and this is outlined in the MGA and also in bylaw 64. And that same rule applies to committee, committee members as well. Bylaw 102 talks about those, those rules for committee members. The MGA states that the, the three strikes, you're out rule does not apply to council or committee members that are absent for 52 or fewer consecutive weeks due to parental accommodation during a pregnancy, or, or commence within one year of a birth or adoption. So parental leave obviously is, is an exception. A council or a committee does have the option to excuse a member's absence by motion if they think that the absence, you know, is, is acceptable. It's, it, it, it has to be stated that, that it, you know, has to be an exception, that obviously we expect all, all members of council and committee members to, to make every effort to, to be able to attend all meetings. In that list of documents that I sent to you, there were position descriptions for mayor, deputy mayor, and councillor, so just a few highlights of those position descriptions. So for the mayor, the municipal government act, section 15 describes the role of a mayor. Obviously, the mayor shall preside at all meetings of council, the deputy mayor shall preside in the absence of, of the mayor. And I should note that if both the mayor and deputy mayor are absent, council may appoint a person to preside the, the meeting from among the council members present. It's rare that it happens, but it is, it has happened in the, in the past, that both the mayor and deputy mayor are absent. The MGA also states that the mayor may monitor the administration and government of the municipality, and communicate such information and recommend such measures to council as will improve the finances, administration, and government of the municipality. The mayor job description that I have circulated outlines three main functional areas, certainly not the only ones. Corporate responsibilities, jurisdiction-wide responsibilities, and council administration and proceedings. The position description for the deputy mayor is part of the councillor position description. The MGA section 16 talks about the role of the deputy mayor. Deputy mayor shall act in the absence or inability of the mayor, or in the event of the office of mayor being vacant. The deputy mayor has all the power and authority and shall perform all the duties of the mayor when the deputy mayor is notified that the mayor is absent or unable to fulfill the duties of mayor. So the deputy mayor job description talks about that the deputy mayor is regularly called on to chair meetings of council and committee of the whole, and to, to have a ceremonial or administrative function. It doesn't- The mayor job description that I have circulated outlines three main functional areas, certainly not the only ones. Corporate responsibilities, jurisdiction-wide responsibilities and council administration and proceedings. The position description for the deputy mayor is part of the councillor position description. The MGA, section sixteen, talks about the role of the deputy mayor. Deputy mayor shall act in the absence or inability of the mayor or in the event of the office of mayor being vacant. The deputy mayor has all the power and authority and shall perform all the duties of the mayor when the deputy mayor is notified that the mayor is absent or unable to fulfill the duties of mayor. So, the deputy mayor job description talks about that the deputy mayor is regularly called on to chair meetings of council and committee of the whole and to have a ceremonial or administrative function. It doesn't necessarily have to be when the mayor is absent or unable to fulfill the duties of mayor. It can be a matter of the mayor saying, I think this would be a good, you know, event for the deputy mayor to attend. Or, for example, with our last council, the deputy mayor chaired all committee of the whole meetings, even when the mayor was present. And in terms of administrative functions that the deputy mayor could fulfill in absence of the mayor, that would be things like signing checks. So, the deputy mayor, once elected on Tuesday, will have signing authority for checks, agreements and things like that. So, that's the administrative functions. The councillor position description, so the position description outlines, again, three main function areas, again, definitely not limited to those three. Corporate responsibilities is one of them. For example, that would refer to acting in the financial best interest of the municipality, approving budgets, making decisions under the planning documents. In terms of jurisdiction-wide responsibilities, that would be, for example, advancing plans and priorities that benefit the entire municipality. So, that's, can, for instance, be outlined in a strategic plan. And then a councillor obviously has district-based activities. District councillor represents the area for which they've been elected. So, where does municipal government stand in, relative to federal and provincial government? We have those three levels of government. All responsibilities for the authority of local governments rest with the province. You will hear the term, sometimes municipal governments are creatures of the province. The provincial government in all provinces in Canada, enact legislation providing for municipal structure, functions and financial resources. Now, what can be said about municipal government is that it's the level of government closest to the people. Grassroots democracy is a term I'm sure you've heard. I've already referred to the Municipal Government Act. You will hear a lot about the Municipal Government Act, a lot of sections being quoted. And of course, we often use the acronym, MGA. It's the main statute governing municipalities. The MGA outlines not only the roles and responsibilities of municipal government, but also the granting and restriction of powers. The MGA states that council shall make decisions by resolution. That's another word for a motion, but also by policy and bylaw. And the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act is part of the MGA. It's part twenty of the MGA. And our municipal solicitor will provide more information on the FOIPOP Act, as it's affectionately known, tomorrow. Other legislation that's relevant for municipal government in addition to the MGA, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. There's the Municipal Elections Act. We've been dealing with that a lot in the last few months. The Assessment Act, the Emergency Management Act and the Rural Fire District Act. And again, there will be more information provided on the Conflict of Interest Act tomorrow. Some typical organizations and departments that we communicate frequently with at the provincial and federal level. There's the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, NSFM. That used to be the UNSM, but it's changed name a few years ago. You've already heard about the NSFM. There's a fall conference happening November twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth in Halifax. So, I think most of you will be attending. The NSFM also has a spring conference every year. So, if you missed the fall one, there will be another one in the spring. There's the Association of Municipal Administrators of Nova Scotia called AMENS. And AMENS represents the interests of administrative municipal staff. The Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the MHA. Obviously, we communicate a lot with that department. And then there's, at the federal level, there's the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And that's the FCM. And the FCM also has an annual conference that usually happens, I think it's in May or June. A little bit about bylaws. That's part seven of the MGA, deals with bylaws. Council has the power to make bylaws. So, that's either to enact new bylaws or to amend or repeal existing bylaws. Bylaws always come to council for first reading. Then there's a requirement to place a notice in the newspaper to announce second reading. And then second reading happens at the next council meeting. So, bylaws will always come to council twice. In some cases, if it's, for example, it's a new bylaw, it may come to committee of the whole first. So, that committee of the whole can first, you know, really, be really well-informed about this new bylaw before it even goes to first reading at a council meeting. All of our active municipal bylaws can be found on our website. The link is there. And a bylaw binder with hard copies of the bylaws is kept in the municipal clerk's office. Policies, that's MGA, section forty-eight. Council has the power to make policies as well. So, again, adopt new policies, amend existing ones or repeal existing ones. That's a little bit different in terms of notice. The MGA states that council shall give at least seven days' notice to all council members before council adopts or amends or repeals a bylaw. There's no requirement for posting that in a newspaper. Municipal policies can be found on the municipal website. And there's the link. And the policy binder is kept in my office as well. And for policies, the same thing goes as for bylaws that often they will come to you three times, committee of the whole meeting first, if it's a new policy, and then to council first. And then council has to give that seven days' notice to be able to adopt the policy at the next meeting. So, just to highlight, just a few of those policies. In the documents that I sent to you, there's a list of several policies that you should be aware of. And I'm just highlighting a few here. There's the communications policy that provides guidelines for council and staff to communicate with the media and the public and also guidelines for communicating on social media. And obviously, that's so important nowadays. The policy states that the mayor is the spokesperson for council unless other members of council are designated by the mayor. So, council shall refer all media requests to the mayor and the CAO. And the CAO is the spokesperson for administrative matters of the municipality. Another important policy for you to be familiar with is the council and committee remuneration policy. It is, this policy is established under sections twenty-three, twenty-four and two oh-two of the MGA. And it deals with the remuneration of council members and citizen members as well. Citizen members receive an honorarium for attending committee meetings. So, that's also outlined in this policy. Council remuneration is adjusted annually based on CPI. And as Kathy already stated, there will be an opportunity for one-on-one meetings with her to review remuneration benefits, any questions that you may have. She said she's available the rest of the day today, tomorrow and Monday as well. And then there's the business expense policy, which deals with the reimbursement of travel expenses incurred by members of council and employees as well. The forms that you need to submit expense claims were also on that list of documents, the mileage and business expense form. So, that's for sort of the more day-to-day expenses. You know, if you have mileage to attend a meeting, for example. And then there's the training and conference form. So, any one of you attending the NSFM conference, for example, would use the training and conference form to submit expenses. It's important to note that council member expenses are posted on our website quarterly. They are made public. And I'd also like to encourage you to have a look at the council conference attendance and professional development policy, which talks about conference attendance, FCM, NSFM, things like that. Kathy already mentioned, there's a vision and mission statement that the municipality has. There's a strategic plan. Council sets key strategic priorities. And those key strategic priorities provide direction to staff. So, the staff know, in addition to our day-to-day operations, what are the things we are working on, any projects, et cetera. The current strategic plan is for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. The link is there. And so, that means that a new strategic plan needs to be developed soon or an amendment to the current strategic plan. And we've set aside January the twenty-third and/or the twenty-fifth for council strategic planning sessions. We're getting there, I promise. The meeting schedule, so the typical meeting schedule for council and committee of the whole is that council meets on every first Tuesday of the month at six P.M. There's often a public hearing first. So, then the public hearing starts at six P.M. and the council meeting follows right after. The regular committee of the whole meeting happens on the third Tuesday of the month. That's a daytime meeting at nine A.M. And then we sometimes have special committee of the whole meetings. And they typically happen on the second Thursday of the month at six P.M. In the next few months, we do plan to have those special committee of the whole meetings on the second Thursday evening of the month to provide more orientation presentations, so that we can bring you up to speed over the next few months. There's a meeting schedule on our website. If you go to our homepage, there's a link there for a meeting schedule that lists all of the upcoming council, committee of the whole and committee meetings. And I also would like to point out to you, there's an agendas and minutes website where you not only can find agendas and minutes, obviously, but also the videos of the live streams and any presentations that have been presented. There's always a link to those presentations as well. Another thing I should add is that sometimes there are special council meetings in addition to these that are shown on the schedule. For example, we sometimes have a special council meeting following the regular committee of the whole meeting. Let's say there are time-sensitive matters on the committee of the whole agenda that council needs to decide on that same day. Then there's a special council meeting following the committee of the whole meeting. When the, as soon as the agenda packages have been posted on our website, Haley or I always send out an email to all council just to notify you the package is available and it will have a link directly to the agenda package. So, just a few dates that you're already aware of, but just to reiterate, tomorrow, again, at nine A.M., another special committee of the whole for more orientation presentations. Then on Monday and Tuesday, there is, there are orientation sessions in Halifax organized by the Department of Municipal Affairs. I know many of you will be attending those. Then we have our, the first regular council meeting of this council, Tuesday evening. And we start at, there's a public hearing as well. We start at seven P.M. normally, as I said, at six P.M. But we want to make sure that everyone coming back from Halifax has enough time to grab a bite to eat and get here on time. Then at November the fourteenth, that's that second Thursday of the month, that we have a special committee of the whole for more orientation at six P.M. Then on November the nineteenth, at nine A.M. is the regular committee of the whole. Most of you will be attending the NSFM Fall Conference, November the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth. And then in December, the regular council meeting, a special committee of the whole and a regular committee of the whole meeting. And as I mentioned, the next few months, we do intend to have that special committee of the whole on the second Thursday of the month. One final note in terms of orientation meeting is that we are in the process of scheduling an orientation session about King's Remo. So, it's the regional emergency management orientation. And we're trying to schedule a date jointly with the councils of the three towns, so that the regional management coordinator, regional emergency management coordinator, Dan Stavel, only has to tell everything once. There's a tentative date for December the fourth in the evening, but I'm waiting to hear back from the towns to see if that works for all councils. So, we'll get back to you on that. As I mentioned, councillors, the mayor and councillors are required to sit on various boards and committees. We have both committees of council, several of them. And there are external boards that councillors sit on as well. The nominating committee is a committee of council. And councillor appointments to that committee need to happen first. And that will happen on November the fifth. Because as soon as we have a nominating committee in place, that committee needs to meet and review appointments to boards and committees. Because recommendations for those appointments need to go to the December third meeting of council. So, what will happen is as soon as we've, we have a nominating committee established consisting of the mayor and three councillors, we will provide you with details on all of the boards and committees, so what they're about, meeting frequency, things like that. Then we will be asking you to provide your preferences on which boards and committees you would like to sit. And then the nominating committee will meet as early in November as possible to review all of those preferences. They will also look at council members' experience. They will also look at workload. Some committees, you know, meet more frequently than others, for example. So, they try to take all of that into consideration. And then they make recommendations that will go to the December third council meeting for your approval. It's important to note that council, when we discuss this, at November the fifth, will have the option to either appoint three councillors at that meeting or to authorize the mayor to appoint three councillors. So, you may want to already think about if you would be interested in sitting on the nominating committee in preparation for the November five council meeting. And finally, my last slide. You have received an email from me, I think it was only yesterday, to provide some information. We would like to know what you would like to have printed on your business cards in terms of contact information. Remembrance Day is just around the corner. And all, the mayor and all councillors are expected to attend one or more ceremonies. So, if you could indicate which ones you're available for as soon as possible. If you haven't already done so, I know some of you have already done that, please complete that form by the end of this week. We've already been contacted by the various legions and organizations to see who will be representing the municipality at those ceremonies. And then also a request to submit your bio. We post councillor, mayor and councillor bios on our website along with the headshots that were taken last night. There's not a real hard deadline for those, but the sooner we can have that information up, the better. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Okay. I got a few questions, but anyone else like to go? Oh, okay. All right. First question I have. The public discussion part of the meeting, is it to the chair's discretion how long some, a member of the public can basically come and hold us hostage, so to speak? Or, that would be my question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, there is actually a policy on comments from the public that states how long members of the public can speak. Off the top of my head, I believe it's ten minutes currently, but that policy is under revision. And there's also, if it's, for example, a public hearing where members of the public can speak, that is outlined in a separate policy as well. I don't know off the top of my head what the speaking time is, but there are policies for those.
Again, I have to apologize. Like I said, I've been out of this for a few years. And that's, I just wanted to... that's, I just wanted to remember. Another question, so, and you clearly stated, once the staff does their presentation, council is not to enter into debate with the, with the staff member, we debate amongst ourselves, but after the presentation, they take a seat, we could still call them for questions, though, correct?
That is correct, and it's been our practice that, once the chair has asked if there are any further questions of clarification, and there are none, that at that point, the time for asking questions has passed, but of course, if there is a question of clarification during debate...
Correct, I'm more thinking of, if a staff makes a presentation, and the recommendation is that we plow something, and it's not up to me, or any member of council, to say, well, to the staff member, well, I disagree with that recommendation, not enter into debate with that, correct?
Correct.
But, but we could, we could turn around and say, why do you think that street should be plowed first, or something?
Yes, for staff, staff information absolutely can still, can still be requested at that time.
I'd like to clarify that. And the last one, don't everybody laugh, now, does the mayor get a corporate credit card?
That's a good question, I can't remember if our former mayor had a corporate credit card, I'm going to refer that question to our Director of Finance, if that's okay.
I, I don't believe that currently there is, but we can certainly talk about that after.
Okay, I appreciate that. It, it has been my experience in the past, and I'm, I'm sure, maybe Emily was past president of, I'm still calling it UNSM, but, you know, there's, there's always occasions when it certainly was convenient, that the mayor had a, had, had a credit card, and, and be honest with you, and, and please don't be throwing me under the bus, but I, I, I used to have one in my former role, and that's the reason why I asked the question. Thank you. Okay, any other member of council has any questions? We don't have any questions, and would thank you, and I'm going to ask for some motions. We need a motion to receive the presentation from Chad West earlier, on the presentation that he did for IT. So, moved by councillor Lutz, second by councillor Allen, okay? All those in favor, please press your button. Okay. You pressed your button?
Did you press it when it was flashing? Because I have a couple seconds behind the mayor.
I did.
So that would just be a verbal...
Okay, motion, motion carried, thank you. And now we'll need a motion to receive the Kathy Nichols' presentation on HR, please. Moved by councillor Peckford, second by councillor Best. All those in favors, please press your button. Ah, there we go, got full slate this time. All right, motion carried, and, and now I would ask for a motion to receive the presentation by Yanni on, from the municipal clerk, please. All those in favor, press your button. Oh, yes, I need, yeah, I need the motion first, yeah, count, yeah, great. Who we all got here, we haven't used Everett yet, councillor McPherson, and councillor Best again, okay, all those in favor, please press your button. Have to apologize, I'm not all used to this sophisticated equipment, I'm still in the old days. All right. Motion carried, thank you, and now I, I would declare that we have a brief recess before we listen to the CAO.
I got a four-hour session myself with you from one to five, so you better, unless you want to be here till nine o'clock tonight, let's get her going. At least you know who I was talking about there, Councilor McPherson. Mr. CAO, you're on.
I'm going to review Part Two, which is the administrative part of the Act. So the Municipal Government Act is laid out in parts. I'm gonna try to stay on track because a lot of what I'm covering at a higher level is gonna be subsequent decks in the next couple of presentations, future sessions that we have. So having said that, what I'd like to review here with you is a little bit about the municipality. So I've been here for seven years, so there's obviously some things that I'm still learning. I'm gonna, on, specific to the Part Two of the Act, we're gonna talk about the CAO council relationship, the responsibilities of the CAO, where the authority comes from, and reporting and accountability of the management team, and then hopefully some practical examples of how we operationalize. So the Act says this, but how do we actually put it on the street, so to speak? So, relative to the municipality, central wastewater collection for treatment for eighteen communities, we have eight treatment plants and we have two water plants. One water plant we own in Greenwood, the second one that we run for the village of Canning. There is a municipal road network, and believe me, that's an hour presentation on itself, and it will be one of the higher priority ones because I suspect that's one of the more common questions you're going to receive. And I probably, yeah, I said I'd stay on track. I wanna keep going on that one, but I'm gonna stay on track because there's a whole separate presentation. There's perhaps a little bit of a less-known piece of municipal infrastructure in terms of a piece of dark fiber line that the municipality owns with a couple of other municipalities and the University of Acadia, Acadia University and the Nova Scotia Community College. So it runs between Dalhousie and Middleton, so we own a chunk of that dark fiber. It's an interesting organization in that it's referred to as dark fiber, so we're in a very limited market where we sell it to someone else and they light it. So we own sort of the backbone infrastructure. We have significant ownership positions in what are referred to as intermunicipal service corporations. And so to explain if you've ever incorporated a business or incorporated a society, or you were part of a workers cooperative or whatever, you would go to the Registered Joint Stocks and you would look up that company name and it would say it's registered under the Business Act. So you can create a body corporate under the Municipal Government Act and you register that with the Registered Joint Stock. So they are body corporates, but they're owned by the municipality. Because of our scale, typically, we have majority positions on those organizations. So in Valley Waste, it's an annual metric, but we usually hover around seventy-five percent of the, of the structure of Valley Waste. King's Transit, it's fixed by agreement today at sixty percent, and the Valley Community Fiber Network is, is a smaller percent because a third of it is owned by the educational institutions. And there, there are others as well. Those are three examples, but another one would be the Regional Enterprise Network. In terms of a little bit more about roads, teasing me to go off-script here, we have what we refer to as J-class roads. So municipal reform in the mid-1990s, nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, there was an exchange of programs between municipalities and the province. So back then, prior to ninety-four, municipalities were in charge of community services. So the two orders of government came together and said, "It's probably more logical to say when you collect consumption tax or income tax, that goes to people. If you collect property tax, that should go to a property-related services." So the exchange was, for example, we took over the cost of policing and the province took over the cost of community services. Those items all totaled up to seventy-six million dollars so that there was cost neutrality for both levels of government. So that wasn't, you weren't exchanging programs at the detriment of the other level of government. To make the list balance, in ninety-five, they come out with thirteen-hundred-and-fifty kilometers, I believe, province-wide, that you're charged a per-kilometer rate, and that charge equaled to seventy-six million dollars. Prior to that, it was owed about five million dollars. So as a result of that, each year, we pay into the province so much money to maintain what are referred to as J-class roads. Not every J-class road, just some of the J-class roads that are specifically identified on that list. From memory, I think we transferred this year about eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars to the province for maintenance. Now, we don't control those roads, we don't maintain those roads, and that eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars does not go into the area managers' coffers. It goes into consolidated revenue from the province, meaning that it could go to education, it could go to community services, it could go wherever. So our ro, our role on the hundred-and-thirty-five kilometers is to transfer money to the province who maintains it. The average rural retains thirty kilometers, so we have a hundred-and-thirty-five, I believe the number in terms of the number of roads. That hundred-and-thirty-five kilometers, I think, is about three-hundred-and-ninety-three roads in total. So you can see where it's a much bigger dot on our radar screen than the other rurals that have, some of them have zero. The average of the rural, rurals are thirty, where we have one-thirty-five. So it's a much more common thing for you to hear. And quite honestly, I, I understand the public and I have sympathy for the public. They really don't care who owns the road, who maintains the road, they want the pothole fixed, right? So then it's, it's gonna have a session about, okay, how do we migrate around to get those things accomplished and the pothole fixed? So annually, we process about sixty thousand tax bills. That doesn't include reminders and whatnot that we send out. Typically, we have about a sixty-five-million-dollar operating budget plus capital. So if we could, capital on this year, I think, is forty-three million, so if I'm trying to do mental math, in total, between operating and capital in the current fiscal year, it's about a hundred-and-six million dollars. Some of our core areas would be building, fire, dangers and unsightly, and land use enforcement services. We provide support to thirteen fire departments. We retain skilled tradespeople and workforce. Deviate there for a second. Nowadays, well, that's actually not a true or accurate characterization. For a lot of years now, you just don't enter into a water plant or sewer plant. You need certification. You need a piece of paper in your, in your back pocket to do that, because we work under provincial operating permits and we're required to do that. Recreation programming and support through community grants policy, so there will be a specific presentation on community grants and how that works. So there's a variety of grant programs that we help community groups provide services in community, in communities. So whether that's operating, running a trail, or a playground, or capital of actually installing some of those things. Provision of diversity, IT and communication services, I guess to wind down here, this little bit of this section. By most metrics, population and assessment, for example, King's ranks as the third-largest municipality in the province. And there's a bit of difference. Obviously, HRM is here, CBRM is here. We come down a little bit under CBRM, but our assessment and whatnot is, is starting to get up there. And then you drop down to East Hans. So there's quite a difference between us and East Hans, and then from East Hans down, there's quite a variability. So what I'm trying to say there is we're a little bit, everyone likes to think they're special, but we are a little bit in a league of our own in terms of where we rank in the province. Others are just purely rural, where we have ten growth centers. I'm looking at Trish, because I always get that number wrong. Ten growth centers, which a lot of our growth centers are larger than most towns in the province. So, onto the MGA and your relationship with the CAO. So when I have something here and it's listed as a section, that I'm referring to the Municipal Government Act. So my relationship or the office that I am fortunate to occupy, as has been said earlier, is the head of the administrative branch of the municipality. So basically, I am your employee. You have one employee. Fortunately for you, at this point in time, it's me. So, and then directors report to me and managers report to the directors. You can accept a council, so if you, if you want to communicate with employees, the Act says that, so I'm not saying this is a direct lift out of the Act. It says that you communicate through the chief administrative officer, except that council may communicate directly with employees of the municipality to obtain or provide information. So you will see when we come to you with proposed requests for decision reports, often the motion will say that municipal council instruct the CAO. But the council motion doesn't say municipal council instructs the manager or the treatment plant operator or whatever. There's always a little bit of discretion here. It's a big organization. You need information. We're here to support you. That's our role. Want to do that, so there's always a bit of discretion about going in and asking for information, but there's, you have to use that discretion. So, do we have a form for something? Yes, we do. Here it is. Can you fill that out for me? Well, that might be on the bubble of that discretion part of it, as, as one example, but even that could be, depending on the context of the situation. So council shall provide direction on the administration plans and policies and programs of the municipality to the chief administrative officer. Section Three, Section Four, no council member committee or member of committee established by council shall instruct or give direction to either publicly or privately an employee of the municipality. The CAO shall, so I've underlined the shall that's in the Act, but coordinate and direct the preparation of operating and capital plans, budget preparation and administration post-council approval, review the drafts of all proposed bylaws and policies, and make recommendations. So I can have a speaking point to a couple of those. So all of the packages, and kudos go out to Yanni and Haley on this. Packages typically can be north of a hundred pages, twice a month for you, but they're all hyperlinked, they're easy migration, so. And what we do with RFDs or request for decision reports, we try to encapsulate that in two pages. So that's kind of less is more, as my late mother would have said. Now, there can be lots of appendices to those, but we try to encapsulate the main topic in front of council within two pages. I look at all of those, and you will see me at this podium fairly frequently as well, presenting my own RFDs or briefing notes to council. Yeah, so I think that's it. I think the last point, review the drafts of all proposed bylaws and policies, I would mention on that one that we do have some standing committees. Very irregularly will I say anything that, so that, so an advisory committee, a standing advisory committee is the same, as the name connotates, is an advisory committee at council, so they make recommendations to council. But I have the ability, or the CAO rather, has the ability to come to council and say, "You've received this recommendation." I may think slightly different about that recommendation. Typically, what I do is I'll go to the advisory committee and tell them I'm doing that, because we appreciate the work and stuff that they're doing, and it may be other information that I've been privy to that they haven't. Sometimes council takes my advice, sometimes they don't take my advice. I don't take any umbrage or offense to that. So, from the shall to the may, so may attend all meetings of council. Commissions or corporations, so for example, I explained what an intermunicipal service corporation is, so I have a right to go to those meetings and make commentary. Observations or suggestions. I appoint, suspend, and remove employees. I act or appoint a person as a bargaining agent. So that's probably another aspect here. On the second point is a point, as I mentioned, there are certain credential positions that are required, and those are often in statutes, that you need someone with, that will hold a certain office, that instead, in a limited number of search, of situations, it's not council that has statutory authority, it's the staff person holding that office that has statutory responsibility. So one example would be the, the traffic engineer. So if the municipal engineer serves as a traffic engineer, they're the authority having jurisdiction on traffic matters, not necessarily council. You can stop me anytime. I'm trying to be mindful of your time here. So the CAO may, subject to policies approved by council, authorize, make or authorize expenditures and intercontracts, sell personal property of the municipality provided it is obsolete, unsuitable, or no longer needed. CAO may, subject to policies, negotiate and execute leases of real property up to a one-year term, including renewals, establish departments, establish a class, a system of classification, and specify offices that may not be filled by the same person, and determine salaries and wages. The CAO may, same caveat, subject to policies approved by council, set the amount of security to be provided by employees, commencement or defense of illegal action, settle illegal action or proceeding. Because of our scale, what I'm putting here, these are not uncommon events. I'll phrase it that way. And typically, as Yanni pointed out in her deck, when we, when I have to see construction from you, and it's subject to solicitor-client privilege or potential litigation, we do that under Section Twenty-two, and we'll do that in private session. And in those sessions, the section of the Act actually says that you meet, and you can only, you can't, you can't move a motion, but you can provide instruction to either the CAO or the solicitor in closed session, is how it works, but you actually don't move motions there. So for me, down to the directors, Section Thirty-one, One, Two, and Three of Part Two. They're accountable to the CAO. They shall submit reports and recommendations through the chief administrative officer. So that hundred pages that I referenced, that's all nicely choreographed and hyperlinked and whatnot. I will read all of those and make changes, and, and the bottom, I, I put my signature on it too, to say that I agree with what the recommendation report says. Directors who disagree with the CAO, the directors over there can cover their ears for this part, provide objections to the CAO, who shall grant same to council. So they have the ability to not agree with me and bring their point of view forward. I have presently, of course, I'm the CAO. I have other reports, but the, the, as you've met here this morning, Greg I have other reports, but the, the, as you've met here this morning, Greg Barr, Brad Carrigan, Rob Frost and Director Javerick all report directly to me. Reporting and accountability, so your relationship with the municipal solicitor, who you will meet tomorrow morning. That firm will provide reports or recommendations directly to you. I, the CAO shall be informed of the contents in advance of the presentation unless the report or recommendation is about the CAO, and then I don't get to see that. Many years ago, I was in school, I was in school a couple of times, but to paraphrase one of my late professors, who actually was a politician for a period of time, he had this mantra of saying, in terms of policy, staff advises and council decides. With respect to administration, staff does and council monitors. And he said, if you can remember those two sentences, eighty percent of your problems of conflict between staff and elected people won't exist. So, the third part of the presentation here this morning is, so we have our relationship defined by the legislation, a little bit of background on the scale of the municipality. How do we make the rubber hit the road in practical ways? So in my estimation, there are six main tools that you'll work with. There are resolutions and motions, there are policies, there are bylaws, there are annual budgets, there's a strategic plan, and then there's communications. So what I'm going to do in the next couple of slides is I'm going to go over a little bit of each of these and then talk about how, what staff's role is in generating this, these types of information, whether it's for a resolution or for a policy. So I know you've heard this a couple of times, but there's a couple of nuanced differences here that I'm trying to put on that may hopefully make it a bit cleaner or clearer for you. So obviously, it's a record of council decision when you move a motion, an expression of municipality's position on specific issues. Now, not always, it's always one of these things, a bit of gray area, but they tend to be non-routine matters. So for example, at some point, you'll all file expense reports. So instead of bringing those expense reports to council every month to approve, they're approved under a policy. So the policy gives staff the authority to approve expenses, and your quarterly expense reports, by the way, are posted on our website publicly. But they don't have to come back to the council table, because they said, the policy says how much for mileage, how much for meals, how much for that. So it becomes a routine thing. Motions, individual motions tend to be on nonspecific or non-routine matters. We have a wonderful database here that you can actually go back to two thousand and sixteen, and if you're doing research on a topic, which you probably will be, okay, what did my predecessors say about this? You can go back and use that searchable database. So the council may exercise any of its powers and duties by resolution unless a policy or bylaw is required. So policies, adding on to what Yanni, or I'm sorry, the municipal clerk said earlier, they provide guidance to the CAO. A municipality's municipal planning strategy is one of the leading policy documents. It's one of these ones in the gray area. We call it policies, but it's actually a bylaw, but I'm throwing it under the policy section here. Unlike a resolution, the section forty-eight, and Yanni did go over this, it's before, the policy before it's passed or amended or repealed, it has to have seven days' notice. And so, on that, you will often see, you won't often, if it's a policy, you typically will see that item three times. So committee of the whole will recommend it to council, and then council will meet and give seven days, and then seven days after that, they'll at some point approve it. So sometimes, even myself, I'll be sitting around the table, I mean, we already dealt with this? I'll be thinking, we already, because you hear it three times, right? So it's just the procedural way of making sure the public are aware that there's a policy and it's a bit, it's a bit out of the just motion or resolution realm, to make sure there's complete transparency, or at least as much transparency as possible. So bylaws. So council may exercise by bylaw any of the duties and powers that may be exercised by resolution or policy. Now again, I'm just giving you an example. It's, there are exceptions of this, but typically, resolution, a one-off type of thing. A policy is a more routine thing that then administration has a delegated authority to deal with and not choke up your calendars. And a bylaw is something that sets out the direction of council, but usually has a, or can have a punitive measure, measure to it. So there's a penalty if you break the bylaw. You can have a fine, or there's some type of stick, so to speak, that goes with a bylaw. Really a primary difference between a bylaw and a policy. I think of bylaws, my own interpretation as the word suggests, it's by law. So it's a, it's a law. So if you're familiar, it's been a few years, I hope it's a few more years since I had a traffic ticket, but you know, our CMP or town police will pull you over and they'll give you a summary offense ticket. So they'll look and they'll check off what section. So we can actually link our bylaws to the summary proceedings act of the province of Nova Scotia, and we can lay a charge either by summary offense, same as a traffic type of ticket, or what's referred to in some cases as a long form, where you have to hire a lawyer, take statements, go through a much more rigorous approach to prosecution for enforcement. Now, depending on the type of bylaw, enactment may require the approval of a specific minister of the crown. And I can think of the EMO bylaw, for example, is required. We have to submit our land, our planning bylaws to the minister, or to the province at least for approval, would be another example of certain bylaws we can do on our own, other bylaws we can draft, but they have to be sanctioned by the minister of the crown before they come into effect. I think I've covered that. Covered that. I think I would say, on that point with the, with the land use and subdivision bylaws, and again, I'm not going to go into the weeds because you're going to have specific presentations, both from the solicitor and Director Javerick, on planning. There is a considerable control that's exercised by the province of Nova Scotia over our planning documents. So we may put, when I say we, I'm saying the municipality writ large, let's say council has a certain direction, you want to change one of our plans or one of our bylaws in that regard, it has to go up through municipal fairs and be sanctioned by them in that case. And they will, they will look at the review of our planning documents primarily through what's referred to as a statement of provincial interest. So in the Municipal Government Act, there are a variety of statements of provincial interest, five, six? Five or so? One of those statements of provincial interest, for example, is agricultural lands. So in our last round of documents, and I was here during that, we went in with certain representations, draft proposals, for example, on infill lots, if you're in the agricultural zone and what you could do in an infill lot, and the province came back and made it more restrictive. So sometimes, you know, we're, we're, we, we have to abide by a more senior level of government ruling on what you're doing. Anyway, there's a, there's a couple of detailed presentations forthcoming on that. So budgets, another one of the six tools. Operating budget, annual, so you may have heard already that there, under the Municipal Government Act, you're not allowed to budget for a deficit. The senior levels of government can run deficits. Each year, we cannot. Twenty-four, twenty-five, sixty-five point three million. First three categories is an interesting one, in that they would be what I refer to as mandated or, you know, regulated things. And, for example, I believe we transfer to the Centre for Education fifteen million dollars a year. We transfer to our CMP about nine million dollars a year. So those are under contract, we don't have any discretion. So fifty-two percent of what we collect on a tax bill, goes to someone else that we don't really have control over. So it's a big chunk off the top of that. So that's the expense side, the outflow of money. On the inflow of money, most of, primarily the vast majority of municipalities receive equalization from the province. It's not unlike what Ottawa does to some provinces in terms of fiscal transfers to create a balance. We do not receive equalization. We had, we receive zero in equalization. So the last couple of years, there's been a strong push to maintain a fifteen million dollar equalization budget. They doubled the equalization budget to thirty million dollars. We have one municipality that takes right about fifty percent of that money right off the top, and there's six or seven municipalities in the province who do not receive any of that. So when the province comes out and says we're going to double something, we didn't receive a financial benefit of that. Capital budget, so that's on the operating side, and again, I'm going really quickly because Director Barr is going to be doing a detailed presentation on this. So instead of an annual, it is an annual, but it also incorporates other years, so it's a multi-year plan. In the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, forty-two point six million. So that's where I was coming up with the forty-two and the thirty-three to be roughly one oh six. Our municipality, if I go off script here for a second, I believe it's just, outside of HRM, we probably have the strongest financial condition index of any municipality in the province. So it's as if you were running a business, you go to the bank with your ratios, you know, what's your liquidity ratio, you know, what's this and the other thing? Our financial ratios are, are very strong. My personal belief is they're strong because we tend to use reserves and long-term debt to smooth impacts on the, on the tax rate. So we create a kitty of money, which is very difficult sometimes to calculate. So for example, we have massive wastewater systems. By my napkin math, over the last five years, we've spent eleven point six million dollars trying to get Numinus back on track. And so to, to put eleven point six million dollars on the, on a, on a tax bill is an extremely tough thing. We're very fortunate in that we've been depreciating the assets, and between the depreciation, depreciated value of those assets and market value replacement, we've squirreled away a bit of money. Now, we had to augment that money with long-term debt, but those two combinations meant the tax rate didn't have to absorb that eleven point six million dollars in one or two years. Tax rates stayed the same. So there's a very strong, Greg has very strong people in his department that will give you sound advice on maintaining reserves and cushioning those fairly significant impacts. If you were, I guess this is a good segue, because my next point, I was going to say it here, a large percentage relates to wastewater. So of that forty-two million, seventeen point five million relates to wastewater. Now, we do our utmost to try to take advantage of all federal infrastructure programs and funds to take that amount off of the top. When I first started years and years ago, that was typically a third, a third, a third, and some of the more recent programs have been as good as seventy-three, twenty-seven, seventy-three percent from the province and federal government and twenty-seven percent from, from us. So again, then we take that twenty-seven percent, what can we take out of reserves? How can we augment that from long-term debt to spread the cost over time? And then that cushions the impact on an annual tax bill, which kind of speaks to the point about asset management. I'll show you a bit of a bias right now. My, if you were to ask me what you, what I thought infrastructure-wise is our number one issue, if I could phrase it that way, it would certainly be wastewater. I could go right down through all of your districts and talk, talk about each one, whether we're in Aylesford talking about de-sludging that has to happen. Canning, we have really robust plans in Canning. We probably have to change technology in Canning. There's significant investment that's coming that way. So there's, there's, there's a lot of information to do. Now I'm looking at, it was interesting this morning, how many councillors previously served on village commissions? So as you, you folks will know, it's, some villages own water and wastewater, some villages own one or the other, and some villages own none. So it's working in lockstep with the villages to make sure that we prioritize that stuff, even with stuff that we don't directly own. So, those are the areas. So then, how do we get involved in that? In terms of, how do we help you with resolutions? How do we help you with policies and bylaws, budgets, those types of things? So, RFDs that we talked about, sorry, slipping into acronyms, always correct me, we just get so used to talking in municipal speak that we're not conscious of it anymore. So request for decision reports. So the, the headings or the place marks in those reports, you have an origin on the top, which sometimes I think, because this is my doing, I should change it because it's not well-understood, so it's probably something we may consider changing here. But the origin just allows you to know when council previously dealt with the situation. And it's often hyperlinked. So we bring something for you, click the hyperlink and it'll take you back to the prior council minute, which could be years ago, could have been last month, and it'll tell you what the previous discussion was at council about the topic. We have the intent of the RFD, so we try to say right up front, like, why are we in front of you? So we're requiring, we're requiring you to consider this because. Analysis, so the RFDs are intended to be a fact-based analysis, so typically, we don't want to go in there and tell you what we're feeling, or, you know, what we believe. They're supposed to be, someone's smirking because they say I'm an accountant and I don't feel. So, true. So anyway, we're supposed to go in with a, with a bit of information of why we think it's fact-based. Not always, but predominantly, we want to see alternatives. So we'll go in there and we'll actually say, we recommend you do this. But then we'll say, but you could do this, or you could do that, and here are some implications. So we like to give you a little bit of a variety of what is in front of you. How the matter relates to the municipality's strategic plan, how engagement was or is to be pursued, and a specific recommendation, and we actually frame it as a proposed resolution. At times, you will change what we say, you're prerogative, you, we work for you. In that type of situation, people like Yanni and Haley and a couple of other of us are probably in the background trying to hear what you have to say and recraft the motion on the fly. But it certainly makes for a much more efficient meeting if we have a proposed resolution in front of you, as opposed to trying to group-write something, typically not a very efficient way to do it. Council can request reports and staff can suggest items for council consideration through the CAO. Like for me, another bias coming in here, I probably will circle back in a couple of months to see if you agree, if you're, if you're new. We have terrific resource here. We have, we have terrific folks on staff from, you know, if you can't look at something numbers-wise or in a written form, we've got GIS people that can put it in a graphic form, mapping form. So, you know, it's, it, it, don't be afraid to say, can we have a staff report on this? And we would go away and, and generate a staff report and bring it back. Role of staff in resolutions, policies and bylaws. The next one's a policy, so we will draft and we will report to you. A request for decision may include an appended policy for council consideration. Oftentimes, if it's not too hard to read, if it's an existing policy, we'll give you the original policy, we'll give you one and track change, and we'll give you a clean one. So you can see what changes are being proposed in an existing one. I think that's probably enough on that. There's, those are the standing headings in our policies. At the end of it, an annotation table is a records, records management speak for, it just says what the lineage of that policy is. When was it introduced? When was it approved? Has it been amended? That type of thing. So it gives the reader a, a history of the policy. In terms of bylaws, we'll do the same thing. We typically, staff will draft a bylaw here. The, our origin or requirement can come from the municipality, provided there is authority from provincial statute. We will do a draft, we'll, if it's not entirely straightforward, oftentimes, we will seek counsel from our solicitor, and they will determine whether we have the authority to do what we're proposing to do. They will look at case law, because if it's ever challenged, we want to make sure that the municipality, Yanni put up on the screen that one of your, one of your core responsibilities is looking after the fiduciary or the corporate responsibility of the municipality. So when you pass a bylaw, I would think you would want some degree of certainty that it will pass muster on challenge in court. So our lawyer would look at case law. And I mentioned previously about speeding tickets and whatnot. When it's relevant, we would try to link the bylaw to the summary proceedings act, because if we need to lay a charge under that bylaw, it can be very expensive to do it long form. You've got to hire a lawyer, you've got to take evidence, you know, go through all of those types of things in a, in a, in a regular court type of proceeding. So, and I know linkage to the summary proceeding act, that can take, that can take a period of time, usually over a year to do that. One of the interesting things about bylaws is that oftentimes, we want to have the same bylaws, the town of Burwick or the, and the town of Kenville and the town of Wolfville. You cannot have the same bylaw. You could have mirrored bylaws, but you can't have the same bylaw. So for example, we wrote an EMO bylaw during the last term of council, we wrote a new solid waste bylaw for Valley Region Solid Waste Authority. And if you go to the books of the, of the municipalities, you will say, see the exact same bylaw with different letterhead on the top. Because it, it, there's no, there's no way to, for you to adopt a bylaw outside of your geographic jurisdiction. So, who enforces the bylaws? So, it depends. How's that for a bureaucratic answer? The RCMP may enforce, and you know, that's another briefing we'll do down the road about what our contractual relationship is with the RCMP. So we actually are a tag-on to the provincial contract with RCMP. We do not have a direct contract with the RCMP. There are two types of contracts with the RCMP. In my primer, my primer, my prior, excuse me, job, I had a, my municipality had a direct contract with Ottawa for RCMP. And in that situation, they do do more bylaws. We have what's called a provincial policing services agreement with the RCMP. And typically, they do not enforce bylaws under that. They can, if they want for efficiency, to lay a charge, if they think that's a better way for them to enforce something, they will, but we can't go to them and say, you must. In other instances, there's authorities having jurisdiction for, for other types of charges. The municipal solicitor serves as the municipal crown, so if you've gone, if you've been in court before, you can hear, you know, the lawyers being referred to as the federal crown or the provincial crown. At times, they will refer to our solicitor as the municipal crown. Prosecution by summary convictions, other by long form. I think I've covered that. So, role of staff in budget development and financial reporting. So role of staff in budget development and financial reporting. So we, probably me abusing a bit of a pronoun, finance typically, although I do look at all of that stuff before it goes in front of you. They prepare drafts for your consideration, and they incorporate strategic plan elements. They prepare and file funding applications. There's some variance reporting, so you know, here, Director Barr, quarterly variance reports or semi-annual quarterly, isn't it? So Director Barr's staff will come in and present variance reports to you on a quarterly basis. Where are we relative to budget? Certainly, in terms of budget development and financial reporting, there's a slew of mandatory filings that we do. There's annual, what they call a statement of estimate report, and there's a financial information report that has to go to the province. There's obviously the mandatory reporting around benefits and all of those types of things. And then there's financial statement preparation. Not widely known, but the Director Barr and I self sign off on the front page of the financial statements. There is some, generally speaking, can be some confusion about who owns the financial statements. Are they the auditors? Are they councils? Who belongs that? Who's ultimately responsible? The actual statement on that or correct answer would be that they're management. So Director Barr and I sign off confirming that to the best of our understanding that those statements are fair and accurate is the way that they're presented. And so when the audit comes in, there's everything that's prepared for the audit, for their working papers and whatnot, including a full set of financial statements. Strategic plan. So another detailed presentation will be provided to council. As mentioned earlier, it starts off with a vision and mission and values. It then goes down into categories. And then from categories, we run into specific strategic projects. So it's not all twenty thousand foot level stuff. So you want to have, for example, council directs staff to say, and we will start off with a facilitated process, and the ones that we've been involved with in the past, we started off by saying, "What did you hear on the doorstep? You guys just come off the doorstep. So what do you hear? What do you think are priorities? We're there as scribes. We take all of that down." And then we'll categorize it, you know, one might be environmental, as just an example. That was in the current strategic plan. So if it was an environmental pillar, then it will drop down to what projects can we identify and carry out in the four years that actually operationalizes that environmental pillar? This building's geothermal. The EPW building is net zero. It produces as much energy as it uses. Aylesford Lake Beach House, the charging station's out here, switching the municipal fleet to EV-supported vehicles. So you start off with there, you come down, you put it in a bin, and then you actually go to very practical things. Current plan runs to 2024. The municipal clerk indicated to you a few minutes ago that will start in early January or in January on the development of a new plan. It'll be a prioritization, it'll align municipal resources, so it becomes a central working spot for developed draft budgets for you. I like to be kind of, I tell you what I'm thinking, I'm one of those type of people. So at times, if it becomes a little bit of the flavor of the day, I would possibly come back and say, "That's fine, that's well within your discretion, but we only have so much resource. So what do you want to change in your list of priorities that you've given us previously?" Can't sometimes do everything, right? So it's a bit of check and balance that can be involved in that. So we assist in the facilitation and prepare draft documents for council to consideration. It's really your document, you've, as I said, been on the doorsteps. You have what you want to see in your mandate, so we try to help organize that and then come up with resourcing plans for that. The last area here is communication. So we mentioned request for decision reports and briefing notes. So the difference between a briefing note and a request for decision is a briefing note is a larger item typically that we deal with, and every couple of months, we'll come in back to council and say, "Here's where we are with this major initiative." We use hyperlinks because it's to help with, because there's such a volume that's related to this. I guess from a personal perspective, I think we should all think more in today's age since the pandemic or if we're out of the pandemic. Reply versus reply to all. I mean, reply to all generates a horrific number of email to try to deal with. There are district-specific communications, substantive versus administrative matters. So by all means, my speaking point on that is whatever it is, give us a call if you haven't heard. We typically try to do our best as staff to let you know of something more substantive that's going on. And I'm just still trying to get my personal head around the new districts and where the geographics are, you know, but for example, we're hopefully going to be breaking ground not so distant future on a quite expensive water line in the Greenwood area, a parallel water line. So we'd want you to know about that. Someone a dangerous and unsightly investigation, we probably wouldn't make that phone call. Not that you wouldn't get it, but then you have the right to say, "I've heard about this, what can you tell me about it?" So let us know. The municipal clerk mentioned that the mayor serves as a spokesperson for council, and I would add, and she'd be so proud of me if she knew it was my last point on my last slide, that the municipality has a communication specialist on staff to help with those things. So happy to take any questions. That's sort of a higher level that will be followed up by a number of other slide decks in the coming weeks, but happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you. Through you to Scott, the growth centers. Can you tell me the ten growth centers in Kings County?
Yes, I can, council. Through you, mayor, to the counselor, I can because I'm going to ask Director Javerick. I know the villages are involved, but then there's certain parts of Cornwallis Square that have others, and Centerville is one as well.
Through you. Actually, I need to make a correction. There's twelve growth centers. And I guess you want them listed, didn't you? Sorry, to the counselor, you wanted the twelve listed? So going west to east, Kingston, Greenwood, Aylesford, Waterville, Cambridge, New Minus, Centerville, Canning, Hansbord, Port Williams, North Kenful, and I'm missing one. Colbrook, thank you. Twelve of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Through you, mayor, to the CAO. Thank you very much for the overview, very informative, lots of information. I'm curious to what is formerly known as the gas tax. I think there's a new title, community something or other to that. Wondering if that is a part of the sixty-five point eight million-dollar budget, or is that over and above? It would appear to me that gas tax, I'll call it for now, was a way for communities to improve upon and build infrastructure. It was a financial asset that they could access quite easily. And just interested in knowing if there will be more information or presentation on that specifically because it's something I hear about quite often, and there are high hopes that that is a way, once again, a measure in which communities are able to develop and improve upon infrastructure and find the resources to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the counselor. Yes, it does have a different name nowadays, and the end of September, we met with the seven villages on a proposed program, and that program will come back to this municipal council. We're going to do a separate presentation on that. The genesis of what we're thinking of as staff and have gone out to the, under the previous council authority to the villages, is gas tax typically wouldn't be in the sixty-five, it would be in the forty million, the capital budget. And the federal treasury board has something they refer to as stacking rules. So typically, when you have infrastructure money for large projects, you can't, for example, put more than fifty percent federal money. Previously, they had, or currently, they consider gas tax to be federal money. So we're trying to make a change that we give municipal money the same amount approximately, although it's by formula, so that some of the villages could then use that, but not in the, it would be okay under the stacking rules. So that gives the villages more flexibility to address their aging infrastructure and upgrades. Yeah. But there's a complete, I'm just going from memory here, there's two separate complete slide decks that will be presented on that. Yes.
All right. I guess that's, I don't see any other questions there, so. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too admire the presentation that you've given us. One of the things with bylaws is there's something that we can do to strengthen bylaws. In particular, a couple of the ones that I had from my constituents was enforcing the bylaw for unsightly premises. Is there anything we can do to assist Terry in his carrying out those duties? What teeth does he have? If we have an unsightly premise bylaw that can't be enforced, is it, you know, what's the use of it? I guess that's my thoughts, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the counselor. I think you've partially answered your question, and sometimes it does come down to resourcing. We can have a bylaw, but dangerous and unsightly is largely governed in the municipal government act. And our operating profile is, of course, that we're, number one, is we're a complaint-driven organization just because of the scale of the municipality. So we don't typically act, we can and have, but typically, our operating profile is to receive a complaint. So that's the first thing I would suggest, is you advise your constituents if they see a problem to file a complaint, and then we're aware of it. And then sort of a step down, in my estimation, although I may refer to Director Javerick is, would come under her department, is typically then what we try to do is gain compliance. You can imagine, and I won't here today, but there's several that we're dealing with now that are quite extreme. You would be in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar price tag to clean up. So our mantra, so to speak, is to work with, is to work with the property owner. Someone doesn't agree with what I'm saying. To work with the property owner to try to gain compliance as fast as possible because it might be patently unfair to all taxpayers to have to fund the twenty to thirty thousand dollar expense when it's a result of someone not taking proper care of their own property. There's another provision that we would use in the municipal government act that we would use and have used, which if there's an immediate threat to public health or safety. And so in that case, you'd have the authority to go in and do demolition. If typically, if it's not under that, but we're recommending demolition, we then have what was referred to as the municipal clerk, there'd be a public hearing. So in a public hearing, you'll hear from the solicitor tomorrow, I believe, you'll say something to the effect that council sits more or less as a quasi-judicial court. You're not there to debate, you're there to listen, and that at a separate meeting, you'll make a decision. So at the public hearing, you can hear from the property owner, if they have a countering point of view of what the charge is. When staff comes in and saying, "We're seeking a sanction, and the sanction is to demolish the property." So I don't know if that helps, but that's kind of what we do and how we approach it. Thank you. Excuse me. Anything you want to add to that? Mr. Javerick?
Thank you. The only other thing that I would add is that, as the CAO had pointed out, dangerous or unsightly is administered through, directly through the MGA, and the MGA, through that, the council has appointed a staff member, they get the title as administrator of that section. And ultimately, it is the decision of the administrator what is deemed to be a resolution. And often, what you, what you as counselors may find is that there may be a disagreement between what is a reasonable resolution from a municipal staff perspective to potentially a neighbor who was making the complaint. So there can be a disagreement in there, and that might be the root of what your inquiry was. Ultimately, the file will stay open until we feel it's resolved to a point that we're happy.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Packford.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the CAO. Just a question about growth centers. You could elaborate a little bit on how the boundaries are set and what the process is to expand those boundaries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the counselor. I'm going to start, and then I'm going to see what I missed from Director Javerick on this. So growth centers, there's a set of criteria that typically are, that have to be met or at least tried to be met in order to be qualified as a growth center, and then they're identified in our planning documents. So for example, you need to have central wastewater, but not necessarily water. There's, you know, it's more or less a community of interest, quote unquote. There is typically sometimes a school that's present in that community of interest.
Well done. That really summarizes it. Typically, we'll also look at things like if there is a village boundary that is also related, we'll typically, but not always, match those up as another way to come up with that boundary. Natural boundaries such as watercourses, Highway 101 is often used as a boundary. So the MPS actually goes through what those guidelines are for determining the growth center. But now that they are determined, there is a planning process that would have to be done by ultimately council direction to make any changes. The creation of a new growth center is also heavily regulated through those same documents.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, just as Director Javerick is making me think about two other points. And one I would attribute to a former colleague of yours when I went to a village commission meeting at Port Williams early one morning, and she indicated that in her estimation, which I thought was just a really good summary, is growth centers are our best mechanism or tool to curb pressure on trying to develop agricultural land. So we need to support growth centers with a proper type of infrastructure so it's more encouraging for people to construct there as opposed to going to what we've sort of set aside as agricultural land. And I'm embarrassed to say this, but I had two things. That was one thing, and the second thought, now I didn't write down, and it's gone. Oh, I know what it was. So presently, it will come back to this council. Prior council dealt with an amendment or instructed staff to come back with some, an RFD on expansion to the growth center in New Minus. And in New Minus, where the old Horton School is, there's, you know, developers there have an eye for some density development, that and one other lot in the Greenwich area. But right now, they're not within a growth center. And it gets, you'll need the separate presentation from Director Javerick on this because, just because it's a growth center, you still have to abide by the zoning in the growth center. So it's a layered thing. So there is, I think Counselor Packford was suggesting, or maybe outright said, you know, how do you amend it? Or how do you add to it? So that's the type of thing that would come back, looking at that criteria, what the land holdings are, if it's an appropriate way to move forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's the end of your presentation, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we're just about ready for some lunch, I think. And is that correct? All right, so I don't know, do we need a motion to break for lunch, or we can just automatically declare lunch break? Nobody's telling me I got to do any different, so I'm going to declare we're now on a lunch break until, and we will resume the meeting with the mayor and the counselors for one o'clock or sooner in the Tides Room. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.